Cut and close.
Just a little bit. Okay. We would like to call the meeting to order for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Citizen input. As I mentioned earlier, if you signed up to speak on the safe parking, that will be during that agenda item. So let's first recognize those that are here to speak on several other issues. We did get an email from Carl Schumaker regarding rural affordable housing, how he appreciates that in the county. We have eight emails from residences seeking Tamlo representation on our D.C. Planning Commission or giving input on what's happening in Tamlo. So those are the eight emails. And then we have requests to speak. The first person I'll call is Keta Kelly. You have three minutes in which to speak, and thank you so much for joining us. Come up to the front, identify yourself, and you can give your address, too, please, Keta.
Sita Kelly.
Oh, Sita, sorry.
Do you need the actual address? Six five one one five Smoky Ridge Road. I would like to see representation for Tamlo now or sooner. That's all.
Okay, thank you so much. Deborah Fink? Deborah?
Oh, Debbie.
Oh. Wrong Debbie. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Deborah Fink, six five three six zero Gurking Market Road, Bend, Oregon, nine seven seven oh three. And I am a resident of the Tamlo Village, as we like to call it. I did send in my input via email also, as did my husband. But it is our understanding there isn't currently representation from a Tamlo resident. And when we have done some research, we found that the membership qualification did indicate that there shall be a member from the community who on any kind of planning for that community. So we are pushing for representation from a Tamlo resident. I don't know that I'm willing to volunteer, and hopefully anybody else in our group will volunteer. So I don't know how that is picked, but I think anybody that's here today or has been sending input is willing to stand up and be participating. So thank you for listening, and please, we'd love prompt action on this. We're very distressed that the two thousand and thirty plan is, I don't know if it's being thrown out or what's happening with it, but we expected that that plan would stay in place until two thousand and thirty. Maybe with the way things work, it'll take a long time for the new plan to be developed, and it'll be two thousand and thirty. But we really don't want to fast-track development and growth. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Justin Hoffman, please.
Justin Hoffman, six three eight seven oh Johnson Road, and Tamlo resident, and just want to see representation as long as you're making decisions that impact Tamlo. We should have representation as the rules dictate should be there. So as long as you're making decisions for us, we want to have representation. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hoffman. Catherine Powell? Kathy Powell?
Thank you for being here to hear me. Can I ask questions in this process?
Well, you have three minutes to testify, and we might answer them, but not, you know...
You could pose questions.
My questions would be, I just learned of the vacancy, the absence of both an attorney and a position on the commission this last week, and was shocked, truly shocked. I think it's irresponsible. And I'm a very direct person, so you're going to just have to know that going in. We're in the midst of a plan in which we've been encouraged to understand that it would be flush with community input. We've been encouraged to participate. We have been left to gather and scramble our own grassroots effort, not knowing where to start, figuring out the system, pulling the record. We've been left with no support from our commissioner, the vacant chair right there, no attorney to advise us, the one that we don't have. So what, I'm just wondering, and my question would be, what would be the possible positive intention of the commission, knowing this for at least a year? I don't really know how long.
No, it hasn't been a year. Actually, Les Hudson, I believe, left in maybe January. And honestly, I thought he, you know, he was an at-large appointment, but he lived in Tamlo. And so I did research when he was leaving, and I was shocked to find out that he was at-large.
What does that mean?
It means it's an appointment from the entire county. It doesn't mean he's from Tamlo. But, you know, when you see his name on it, I thought he was representing Tamlo. Well, he wasn't. So that's where the disconnects happened.
We might need to rewind even a little further. So the empty seats up here, this is the Board of Commissioners?
No, no. I'm being symbolic.
Okay, okay. So yeah, Planning Commission is something separate, but also very important to understand, there are a number of processes, county processes, that are happening in Tamlo right now that the Planning Commission doesn't really have a role in. You know, they had the roundabout at Cook. Planning Commission isn't involved. The sewer analysis, Planning Commission isn't involved. It is a county process. Our roads director, public works, you know, department and community development department are involved in that, but the Planning Commission isn't really involved. So having a Tamlo person on the Planning Commission doesn't get you more input on the sewer analysis. You should be engaging in other ways to get your input into that process, but it's just, it's really important for folks to understand what the Planning Commission is involved in and isn't involved in when you're thinking about, you know, how important it is to have representation there.
I understand. I guess I would just say, if we had a representative, a commissioner from our community who is vested in our community, we could have these conversations with that individual, and we would learn where the lines are. Because just as a private citizen who hasn't really been involved in very much local politics, I always hear, and this isn't, I'm not saying you're passing the buck, but I always hear, yeah, that's not really what we do, our thing is right over here. But to a private citizen, it's like, well, you know, this one asked for this study, and then this study goes to this guy, and then the study goes with recommends, I don't know, but the Planning Commission comes up, and the subjects are at your meetings. So just, I'm just saying, is there any reason that we can't start the process? It's Monday this week, whatever forms need to be filed, get these two positions filled? Because at the very least, it would make us feel a little more supported, a little more represented. We would have someone who's vested like we are. I think in terms of goodwill, I think it's really important that this be expedited. You're going to hear that all day long here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to cut to the chase, like, I will say, when the next at-large position rotates into the end of their term, June thirtieth, I am very open to the idea of converting that seat to...
Why do we wait for an at-large? We're due a commissioner.
Because a past Board of Commissioners made the decision to convert that seat to an at-large. This was more than five years ago. Like, I wasn't here. Commissioner DeBoe might remember this. But, you know, that was not, it wasn't this Board of Commissioners' decision, but basically to change that decision, we should, we either need to unseat someone from the Planning Commission, which, you know, given the years of service that some of our Planning Commissioners have put in, would not be very respectful. Or we need to wait until, you know, a few months until that term is up.
You mentioned Les left. He was at-large. Why wasn't he replaced with Tamlo?
Because he was filling an at-large seat, so...
He was an at-large seat that he was filling.
You're going to wait for the next at-large seat? Am I confused?
Yes. I mean, the...
Can you address this? Maybe that would help the community. Because I, you know, I've been worried about this for quite a while. And when I did my research and the fact that Les was at-large, and it says shall as best as possible, something along that terms?
So, just, yeah, so one note. I want to thank everybody for the passion here. There's no great injustice that's going on. We had a call for Planning Commission seats two times this last time, and we didn't have a response. All of a sudden, there's a big resonating topic here, and everybody's coming in saying, why didn't this happen? We were trying to get people to apply, and I'm telling you, this is the last time around. But, oh, so there's a reason for it, though, too. There's a reason. We're all getting information down different paths. And I just saw it, I mean, we're talking to people, and somebody's reading the newspaper, somebody's listening to a radio station, somebody's, you know, watching a website. We're not getting the same information. We have got to be careful as a community right now. You know, we are going in different directions, assuming that maybe something's happening that isn't. But let's get good information today, too.
Peter?
Thank you. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. So just a couple of responses, just for the audience and anyone who's listening at home to understand how the Planning Commission is structured. So there's a provision in Deschutes County Code that describes the roles, the responsibility of the Planning Commission, and their geographic representation. And while the board and staff and administration appreciates the passion and the articulation for the need to have representation, I'm just going to articulate what the code acknowledges. The code acknowledges that geographic representation, to the greatest extent possible, is achieved. And there is an acknowledgement that Tarabon, excuse me, Tamlo representation is important, but it's not a strict requirement. And what's happened over the years is the predecessor to this commission found that the Tamlo position was at-large. So what does that mean, at-large? It means that it's a general recruitment for any county resident that would like to participate on the Planning Commission. And so we've mentioned Les Hudson, who was at-large. And so staff in coordination with the Board of County Commissioners in February recruited for an at-large position, and one was ultimately appointed. So, and then there was a vacancy in Sisters Country, and that was, there was an active recruitment, and there was an appointment. So let's, let me...
Sisters appointment as opposed to an at-large appointment?
It's Sisters area. Yep, there's a Sisters area. There was representation from Sisters, and we received a Sisters area ultimately the Board of County Commissioners appointed that position. But let me talk about the composition of the Planning Commission. Terms are staggered. Commissioners are eligible for two four-year terms, and the four-year terms stagger, so, and not in any one year would you have the full commission needing appointment or terming out. So what happens this June, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, we have two Planning Commissioners who term out. One is an at-large position, a position that's currently served by a resident from Tarabon. And another position turns out in the Bend area. And so the Board of County Commissioners can determine how they want to direct staff to recruit to fill those positions. And in the interim, I'll just acknowledge, to the extent that there's interest to have Tamlo representation, at least started with the Planning Commission, we can't change the number of seats, the board could decide to recruit early, knowing that these positions, again, these two positions term out in eight months, approximately eight months. But one, the recruitment process could start early, and then that person could attend meetings, you know, online or in the audience. The commission could also determine, if this is temporarily, if they want an ex officio member to participate. What does that mean? Ex officio, you can have additional members on these advisory committees. It doesn't mean they get to vote on an issue, however, but they could be sitting on the dais, they could ask questions, they could be engaging in a multitude of issues. So those are a couple of options that I introduced for the Board of County Commissioners consideration, and as just as part of this kind of educational process that we, that staff is, you know, articulating, just so people have a better understanding of how the Planning Commission operates. The last comment I'll make is, people are probably wondering, well, what other geographic representations do we have? So we have two at-large positions. We have a Bend area position. We have a South County, we have two Bend area positions, a South County position and a Sisters area. So again, to the greatest degree possible, and I've been here since two thousand and four, the Board of County Commissioners has been really vested in making sure that we have geographic representation, knowing that our county is three thousand square miles, and we have residents from South County to Alfalfa to Tarabon to Tamlo and everywhere in between. So hopefully that's helpful for the board.
You just said two from at-large, one from South County, two from Bend, and one from Sisters. There's one more.
Oh, and there's one in the Redmond area. Thank you, my mouth was off. The Redmond area, that's correct.
And just, I mean, it's a little bit of history for folks. It does, in the, you know, in the original policy, you know, there was a Tamlo zone seat specified, and it's a little band, longitudinal band that runs across the county, and Tamlo is in it. But the Board of Commissioners, and again, this is history, I wasn't here, but the Board of Commissioners moved away from that when there was nobody from in that zone applying to serve on the, on the Planning Commission. This is, you know...
No, Tammy was on it.
We had people apply.
Peter, Nick, could we, could you step up?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Chair. About a dozen years ago, when I started with the county, we had a vacancy. And at that point, I asked the Board of County Commissioners, we have a Tamlo seat at that point, do you want to fill it with a Tamlo resident, or do you want to fill it with an at-large seat? The board gave me the direction at that time to fill it with an at-large seat. Fast forward, we continued to fill it at an at-large seat until Les Hudson, as you mentioned, served. Nobody anticipated that he was going to resign early, which he did. And so now we're in the situation that we're in, where we have seven full seats, as Peter described. I did consult with Dave. I do think that if the board were interested in the ex officio membership, that is something that we offer to the Historic Landmarks Commission, and it serves us very well. That would require a text amendment, in my opinion, and Dave can weigh in on that as well. But that's not a long process, but it is a process to add an additional seat to the Planning Commission as an ex officio. And then it would be at the board's discretion, if the board wished to keep that position post-July first, but at least it would, it could provide a voice at the table, if not a vote. And I don't expect any votes to occur, Peter, you can correct me if I'm wrong, on the Tamlo Community Plan, the comprehensive plan, any plans of that magnitude before July first of two thousand and twenty-three. So, and that would give the Tamlo community a voice at the table, if that's something the board were interested in, and then be able to vote later. Again, I don't know when those votes are anticipated, but probably not until next fall at the earliest or beyond.
Yeah, and just for the public's understanding, that there's tremendous interest based on the correspondence that I've seen from Friday into today about the Tamlo Community Plan and the Tamlo wastewater master planning process. And the Tamlo Community Plan is on hold right now temporarily because we know that the community is so engaged about the Tamlo sewer feasibility study. And so that process is on a separate but somewhat parallel track, but we understand that that process needs to come to conclusion before we re-engage the Tamlo Community Plan to hear from residents about their respective interests and priorities as it pertains to the Tamlo community over twenty years. If I may, just really quickly, just to clarify what the appointment process is for a Planning Commission, and I just heard that there's some really strong opinions, and possibly even singling me out for somehow having a role in terms of how the appointment process was run for the at-large position. And I want to be very clear that staff works with, based on the direction of the Board of County Commissioners. We recruited for an at-large position, and we received approximately twelve applications. Per the direction of the board, myself and the Chair of the Planning Commission, Jessica Kiris, went through and went from twelve to approximately five applications. And then we worked with the Board of County Commissioners in a public meeting to determine which ones that they wanted to, whether or not they wanted to delegate, or if they all wanted to be part of the interview process. They, and what's happened this year is the Planning Commission is vested, and each of them wanted to participate in both the at-large and the Sisters Area Planning Commission vacancies. So staff ultimately has to schedule meetings with each commissioner, one-on-one with each commissioner, to make sure it's not a public meeting, but ultimately, those interviews took place. The Planning Commission, excuse me, the Board of County Commissioners took their respective notes. Staff was neutral, want to emphasize that, that staff was neutral in ultimately how the appointment process was exercised. And then there was a public meeting where the Board of County Commissioners discussed the finalists and which ones they felt were appropriate to be on the Planning Commission. So staff serves as a facilitating role, and ultimately, the decision is made by the Board of County Commissioners.
So, yeah, three minutes testimony, you got a half hour of conversation going on. Good job.
Thank you, that was very helpful, and I doubt for a moment, the staff and where their orientation is, or really any of you. I think it was an oversight, but I think it's a gross oversight. Any chance we can get an attorney?
Well, so, when you ask that question, I feel like there's sides being drawn here. This is planning, this is visioning, this is what is, it was mentioned, the two thousand and thirty plan, we thought it was going to be, you know, till two thousand and thirty. That's a comprehensive vision document that goes out like twenty years, but you'd want to update it every ten years because you're looking at a horizon. So when you ask for an attorney, is that because you want to take a position on something?
We're supposed to have legal representation also? Am I mistaken in that?
Dave, what do you...
On what topic, though? What is the, what is...
I who?
Yeah, you'd have to give more...
All I know.
Yeah.
I'll stand corrected.
Well, yeah, so I mean, there's, we do stuff by law here, but so when you ask that, I think of, because you're trying to take a position, or you want to just stay within the bounds of law, you know?
Any positions that are meant to support the community that maybe haven't been filled, that need to be filled. Thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes? Okay.
Just to kind of get to, get us to June thirtieth, July first. So we'll have an at-large opening, but if people want, if people want a seat on the Planning Commission specifically redesignated to be clipped to Tamlo, then that is a specific decision that we have to make.
Can we make that in advance? Is there any reason that can't be made?
I mean, we can have that discussion, and I do think we can have that discussion over the next few months. I personally think that, like, that it's a good discussion to have, but that we also should be looking at the way that the zones are drawn, because, again, the zone that Tamlo sits in, it's a strip that runs across the entire county east to west. And if you really want it to be a geography, you know, like a zone geography that represents Tamlo, then it should be more like a round circle than, you know, a little band that runs across the county. And, you know, you could have somebody who lives east of Highway ninety-seven who filled that seat, right? So it's not a Tamlo seat, it's a little geographic strip that Tamlo happens to be in the middle of.
So what you're saying is that also maybe should be revisited in order to get at the goal?
So that would be my, that would be my suggestion, is that we actually look at the, we look at the, we look at both the map and the zones and the seats, and we come up with something that is better at representing the various communities of the county. And then we can move to fill a seat that would be specifically dedicated to Tamlo for July first. And because if you don't do that, if you keep the seat as an at-large seat, and you basically, you can send, you can send in applicants from people from Tamlo, but they are, they're competing against people from across the county in an at-large pool, and that, you know, may or may not work to your advantage.
Thank you.
The fact that, you know, what was it, in two thousand and twelve or two thousand and ten, they switched to at-large instead of recognizing Tamlo, and we all see what's happening in Tamlo, there's so much growth going on there, you know? Maybe it's time that we switch back to the way it was twelve years ago.
And I apologize for, you know, the passion. It's overwhelming. I mean, we have been hit with so many, so many developmental moves from so many different agencies, and, and, you know, ODOT, and how you interface with planning, and how you, I mean, it's, it's spaghetti to us, and we're trying to unscramble it. And so this, some of my passion comes from, this is way too much, way too fast, I don't know what's going on, and I don't trust it. Because that's where people go. I really appreciate.
Well, thank you, Kathy. Let me, Jeannie Fraly, would you like to come up? You have three minutes?
Yeah.
Well, two and a half.
Oh, no, 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 no. Hey, I'm Jeannie Fraly, 64790 Bruce. And, yeah, so we have, just like Kathy stated, we have been hit with a lot of stuff in Tumalo. I've spoken with a lot of you guys about it. I've talked to, you know, Chris Doty on the phone, and Todd Cleveland, who are all very helpful, as is the rest of you as well. So, but let me, let me talk about code here a little bit. So it specifically says in here for the Commission, and I just looked it up this morning, "The membership of the Commission shall, as much as possible, be representative of the various geographic areas of the county. This should generally consist of the following: one member from the South County area of Lupinance and River, Townships 19 through 22; two members from the Bend area, Townships 17 and 18; one member from the Tumalo area, Township 16, ranges 11 or 12; one member from the Sisters area, Townships 14 or 15, range 9, 10, and 11; one member from the Redmond area, Township 14, 15; one member at-large." And so, I don't see where it says two members at-large in the county code. So, and I just, I just saw it this morning, so it's like, that should probably be changed if we're going to have two members at-large, because that's not correct. And another thing, we did have very good people applied for this position. I heard there were two people from the Tumalo area that did apply for the position. I'm not sure, I think it was Peter that probably interviewed them, and I'm, I'm not sure why that they weren't selected. One was probably overqualified, maybe, I don't know. But she would have been a very good representative for the Commission for Tumalo. So, there's Nathan Hovecamp, I believe, and he expires on June 30th of 2024, who, he lives in Bend, so nothing to do with Tumalo. Now, I've been on a lot of these Zoom calls for Tumalo, have not seen one of these people ever on one of the Zoom calls. Several were invited, but none of them have ever shown. So it shows me that there, that people don't give a crap about Tumalo that are appointed to represent us. So, you know, that, that's what I would like to see, I would like to see, you know, something happen to that, with that. You guys, the County Commissioners, are the bosses, so you hire, or basically tell them, you know, what's going to happen. It's, it's not up to Peter and Nick to tell you, you know, that, gee, Tumalo doesn't need representation, Tumalo doesn't need a person, you know, on the Planning Commission, because we do, we definitely do. It would save a lot of phone calls from me to people, and from everyone else in this room, calling everybody, you know? And poor Chris Doty, you know, "Chris, what's going on, you know, are we putting sewer pipe underneath the road? What's happening?", you know? It's like, if we had another person that represented us, that would help a lot. It would save a lot of people from getting a lot of stuff, you know, from the community. As you see, we have a large supportive audience for Tumalo, you know? Tumalo, it, it's, it's a great community. With all of this, I have developed all of this, you know, with the people that represent and love each other, and we're here for each other to support each other. And so that's, that's awesome, but that's, I would, I would definitely like to see you guys go with county code. Now, if I wasn't up to code, and I wanted to permit, pretty sure I couldn't get one. So, right now, we are out of code. So, code states that we had, would have a person for Tumalo, and so I just, I'd just really like to see that happen.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony this, today, this afternoon. It looks like we have Dale, is it Pierre?
Yes, Dale Pierre, live at 646, 64711 Wood Avenue in Tumalo. And I'm also the District Manager, Laidlaw Water, and I think we seriously need a representative that is active in the Tumalo area, that knows what our needs are, and what we, the problems we encounter in some of the things we're trying to do. I just think we need to have a representative that is more familiar with Tumalo, not somebody that lives in Terabon or South County or something, representing us down there, because they're really not hearing the input from the community. Or, we go, we have all these community meetings and stuff, and people say, "I'm not being listened to, they're not hearing me." We're experiencing this right now as property owners with this pathway that's going beside our property underneath the highway. We've made suggestions about how that county road is 60 feet wide, they could take a chunk out of the center of it, put greenway on each side of it or something, keep the people from being right at our fence line with graffiti and whatnot that we know is going to happen, but that, oh no, that, that can't happen, because this is the designers we're talking to in ODOT. That's, the county says we have to do this, and the code says we have to have sidewalks that line up perfectly at the corners and go on this way. I said, "Why can't you come to the corner, make a left turn, go to the center of the street, and make a right turn and go up the pathway, and keep people and their dogs and everything from being right on your property line?" Because you know what's going to happen with the dogs, need to go to the bathroom, they're going to be in my yard. And otherwise, they could have had 20 feet out of the center, you give 20 feet each side of the, of the pathway, and had a greenway through there. And the other thing is, is who's going to maintain that? It's going to become a trash pit. In fact, thank you for allowing me to speak, that's.
Thank you.
And if I could just say, if I could just say, Dale, that, that road issue you just described, it's super important for the county to hear from people from Tumalo about issues like this. The Planning Commission is, for that specific issue, is not the place where it happens, though. So, I, I mean, if, if we're talking about how does, how does the Tumalo community communicate with the county, you know, what you're doing today is actually really, is actually probably, you know, exactly right. You know, this is, the Board of Commissioners is where all this stuff integrates up. The, the Tumalo Community Plan, the Comp Plan, you know, investment in the roundabout at Cook Road. I mean, ultimately, that all does come here. So, even though the Planning Commission isn't the place to talk to people about your road concern, this is an appropriate place for you to, to come in.
I've been involved in trying to, ever since this concept came out several years ago, that we're going to do this, I've been talking to the design engineers and everything, because our water system has to make thousands and thousands of dollars worth of changes that we're really not able to afford.
Right, right. Well, so you are, you're already engaged with a, with, you're already engaged with the County Road Department, so do, do keep in touch with the Board of Commissioners. And we can, I mean, we can ask questions, and, and ultimately, you know, decisions on, on roads, those get made here.
And we, we've been trying to talk to the designers, but you know, you can't talk to a design engineer. They don't understand reality. It, it works fine on paper, and we're experiencing that right now, right there with, with what we started off our approved prints, and now we're coming and making changes, because, oh, well, we messed up there. You know, and I don't think that should be the end user's responsibility to correct their problem.
Well, we, the, the Board of Commissioners can ask questions, Grail, Grail County staff, Grail contractors. We might still decide what they recommend, but, you know, we can at least, if we hear your concerns, we can ask questions, so please.
Reality is different than what goes on paper.
It usually is.
And, and try to get that point across to them. I don't have an engineering degree, so I don't know, and mine is all farm boy engineering, you know, we just made it work.
Larry Loveland?
My name's Larry Loveland, I live 64750 Cook Avenue, a resident of Tumalo, and I'm here to support representation for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Deborah Se?
Hi, my name is Deborah Se, 63870 Johnson Road. So, coming here was educational. I find that there's misinformation going on as well amongst y'all. But saying that you have nothing to do with the sewer, and nothing to do with the roundabout.
So, let's clarify, yeah, so who's we, so there's been a very specific request, we want somebody on the Planning Commission. And the message is, the Planning Commission wouldn't have anything to do with the sewer. We are the Board of Commissioners, we are involved with that, and in, in an advocacy role.
Get input from the Planning Commission?
Not for the sewer.
For the sewer analysis.
Okay, all right, well, that's good to know, but I'm glad to hear that you're putting the plan on hold until the sewer analysis is done. Is that true?
Correct.
That's what Peter just said.
That's correct, we deliberately, we, we've heard.
That is good news, I'm really glad about that, because we feel like we've been snowballed, you know? It feels horrible. We, we see the regulations, it says that we, and having this Tumalo position, put it as a large position, who decided that? Was it the Commissioners? I mean, it's like, that should be decided, well, shouldn't we have an input on that? I feel like that.
It was done in 2010, apparently.
And, well, but I've been involved with all the appointments as a Commissioner, and, and as I say, when it comes around, we're looking for anybody and everybody to apply and get involved, and we must have just turned a corner, because we're filling the room about this great injustice as perceived, but we were asking for this kind of input last time around.
So the last time around, April this year, two people from Tumalo.
We'd have to go back and look at the names, I don't, I don't know offhand.
And were, they were interviewed, or maybe not even interviewed, one person, their thing just got thrown out.
And they, they, they were part of an at-large pool of applicants, because an earlier Board of Commissioners had decided that that seat would be at-large. So if you want, again, if you want it to be.
You guys weren't around? No, we're.
No, no, no.
About in 2010.
2010 was when.
This year. Two people.
I understand, but, but when, when applications went in, in April this year, they went in for an at-large position. That, it became an at-large position 12 years ago.
It, it actually officially became an at-large position?
It would, there were, the, the Board of Commissioners at the time, I wasn't here, but the Board of Commissioners at the time decided that, that, that there would be two at-large seats at that moment.
My question is, as Commissioners, you know that you're planning on doing the Tumalo plant. Why in the world wouldn't you make that a priority, to have a Tumalo representative?
Uh, so, I mean, this, we're, we're going to go a long time here today, but let me clarify. Doing a Tumalo Community Plan is extra, it's like, let's get the whole community to provide input on this topic, anybody and everybody. So if you had one person on the Planning Commission from Tumalo, trying to explain to six other people that might be close in that area, that's not content, that's just people talking. When we have an extra project called the Tumalo Community Plan, this is, we're writing a check for extra, this is more. It's like, we're, the message that I've invested in is getting turned around by the time you're receiving it. I'm just acknowledging, we're seem to be way off of what we think we're doing here. We're giving extra focus to do great things, planning in Tumalo, and now we're getting a response saying, "Why don't I have my person on the Planning Commission?"
What, from our perspective, especially, I think, with the sewer, I think that was really the.
Well, and there may be other issues here, yeah.
Sewer was like, what, you know, and then.
And that's different than the Planning Commission.
There was corruption there, there was.
So, we need to separate those issues.
Yes, yes.
Sewer is, so remember, it's a platted area, late 1800s, there was, somebody put a map together and said, "This is Laidlaw", and it's, there's these little, cute little tiny lots. It's an urban unincorporated community, sewer is allowed in that area, that's a whole different project. Nobody, nobody's saying that sewer might be there someday, it can be there someday, it's allowed there. So that's different than the Planning Commission, though. So, as I say, we're filling up the room with energy, but we got to break this apart a little bit.
We've gotten information about some businesses that have gotten permits pending, I mean, like, not pending.
So that's got nothing to do with the Planning Commission, so I'm just, that's all I'm acknowledging, and we can talk about the sewer issue.
So that is important to understand, and the distinction. It would have been nice to have somebody on Tumalo on the Planning Commission to talk to us about this, because we didn't know.
Well, I'm available, and I always have been, in fact, you know, we're going through, so please, I mean, we are full-time Commissioners, I am here for you.
But you had, you had just said that no one applied, and we had two people apply this year.
So, the work of a Planning Commission is a countywide work plan that we, we publish annually. So, I, as I say, we'd have to look at the names and get back to where we were at, but it isn't the, the city councillor from Tumalo, it's land use associated with the land use system countywide. If you had somebody from the geographic area, that's wonderful. So it's like, I think you're expecting something that it isn't, isn't the way I'm seeing it.
Well, I hope that you will take our voice.
Oh, this has been great today, yeah.
Because we, we've been feeling unheard, I don't know what to do with the sewer thing now, like, who do we go to for that?
You keep talking to us, keep talking to.
But it's, it's something that's going to be a challenge. Some people are not going to want it, right? Commercial really wants it.
There's illegal things going on, right? What do we do with that? How do we address that as a group? I mean, we, that's why we're like, please, give us a representation, like, give us somebody. This is ridiculous.
The Planning Commission definitely couldn't help you with the, the, the legal issues related to sewer analysis. But if you are talking to us, and we think that there's been legal irregularities, we can ask County Legal Counsel to, to investigate things, and, and kind of put together legal analysis on something.
And anybody can go to the District Attorney and say, "I think there's, you know, a case here, and somebody should investigate", I mean, there's all kinds of opportunities here.
And having Todd, Todd Cleveland part of the conversation, too. Definitely, I'm glad that we're hearing from you all today, because it has, it's been, it just hasn't felt right for a while. And, you know, if we can hopefully do a text message, you know, amendment at some point, sooner rather than later, so that someone from your area, right. But we have to make that decision at a different point, I do have two more people I need to hear from.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Diane Dunn?
And Commissioners, I do just want to caution you, I mean, with regard to the sewer system, there's already one litigation active on that, and you could have other matters that come before you, so I'd caution you on inviting communications, because you could all end up becoming blocked out of participating further when matters come before you. So it's, it's kind of a fluid situation, I would just, probably the, the best point of contact would either be the Road Department, or perhaps Peter's Department of Planning.
I think it was when Kathy Powell mentioned, you know, I, we want a lawyer, it's like, okay, are you taking a position, or are you just trying to follow the law? So, that's interesting that that request is out there.
And Chair, if I just may offer, I coordinated with Chris Doty, our Road Department Director, whom most of you, I think, know and have been in contact with, and he shared with me that the Board will consider the findings of the sewer feasibility study in Tumalo in early December. He hasn't defined the date yet, he will very soon, so contact any of us, or, or Chris Doty directly, so that'll be a, a good discussion to have in a couple of weeks.
In early December, okay, all right, thank you. Diane?
Diane Dunn, 20036 Tumalo Road. I'm a Tumalo resident, obviously, and I can't really say it much better than everyone behind me. But if we're making decisions on the sewer in December, I, I move, well, one, the Commissioners redraw the maps, much like they do the Bend neighborhoods, you know, Orchard District and all the districts, and have representation like that. But then also, don't make any decisions for Tumalo until we get a representative on, on the Commission.
If I could, if I could give an example, so people, there's a lot of concern that a Tumalo voice isn't present in key decisions, because you, there's no one in, from Tumalo in a Planning Commissioner role. And a lot of those are, are actually things that the Planning Commission doesn't have anything to do with, but. So, let me give you an example of something that the Planning Commission does do, that where not having someone from the Tumalo area engage, you know, participate, you know, being a Planning Commissioner maybe means that we are missing out on your voice. So, right now, the county is engaged in comprehensive, a comprehensive plan update. It's called the Schutz County 2040, because that's the way we do these, these forward-looking plans, you. plans. You name it to the, like, end date of the plan, not the current date. It's not called Deschutes County 2022, it's Deschutes County 2040. So, that comprehensive plan, the Planning Commission is steering that and guiding it. They are collecting all sorts of public input from people across the community about what they want to see in terms of land use and growth and develop, you know, economic development and development as their community changes over time. The comp plan process is prolonged. We will not be making any decisions on that until late 2023 into 2024. So, I mean, that is an example of something that the Planning Commission is very involved in, where having a Tumalo voice on the Planning Commission could help to get your vision and your desires for your community into the comprehensive plan. But the decisions won't be made until, again, until past this date, this magical date, you know, July 1st, 2023. So, there is an opportunity there. But there's, we've talked today about a lot of stuff that the Planning Commission really doesn't have a role in, so-
We need to change the name of the Planning Commission.
Well, so, there's two things that you might remember. This is an urban unincorporated community, you could have a city council, and you, five of you could be on the city council. So, you could have a vote for that. But also, I mean, this is, we are the elected representatives for the level you're asking about. So, maybe you want to have the Tumalo Commissioner, which is geographic, you know, commission seats because we're all three at-large all over the whole county. So, I'm just pointing out, there's other ways that this could go, too. And the Planning Commission, it's just the land use associated with all zones across in the rural county. You're asking for more municipal-type things here, so it's a good conversation today.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Sheriff, can I just, oh, go ahead.
Yes, Peter?
I was just going to offer, knowing that you have a very large agenda, that I can certainly make myself available to explain the Planning Commission to everyone who's here, passionate about Tumalo. Very quickly, the Planning Commission focuses on land use policy. And a perfect example of what they've done recently is there were some changes to state law which can allow rural accessory dwelling units in certain rural residential zones. They explicitly looked at code changes that could be made to our zoning per the direction of the Board of County Commissioners. They provide, they take public testimony, they ultimately make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. So, that's the level that they operate on. It's policy changes, changes that we can make structurally to zoning, but when you get to site-specific development, they are not involved, and that's explicitly called out into code. So, that's really what we're trying to differentiate this afternoon. But I can certainly make myself available and can step outside as the Board gets to other agenda items if that's helpful.
Items 12 and 13 on our agenda today are work products of the Planning Commission efforts.
Correct.
So, if you want to see how that goes, you can stay.
Nick, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, just two pieces. So, one piece, when Peter talks about them being involved in planning and policy, it is very important to know that our Planning Commission is not a decision-making body. Only the Board of County Commissioners is a decision-making body. They are a recommending body. Not to say that their voice is very important, but the Board is where all of the decisions are made. And just the second piece, to be clear, that no decisions will be made in early December regarding the sewer feasibility study. It will be a presentation, and everybody's welcome, it's a public meeting, but it'll be a presentation on, this is what the study was, and this is, these are the outcomes of the study. But staff at that point will not be, from my understanding, seeking direction from the Board on a path forward. It's going to be informational only. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Informational only, early December. But you, I'm sure you'll want to be part of the, of what we're hearing. Jim Dunn, are you in the room?
My name's Jim Dunn, my address, 20036 Tumalo Road. And I'm backing up what everybody said. This is especially important with the key initiatives at our doorstep. We have the Tumalo 2040 Plan, we have the sewer project, we have the rural ADUs, we have roads. Dale mentioned the bike path, the developments, and we have a bus stop. And Phil, I'd have to say that each one of these things are linked to one another. You put a sewer in, then it goes to zoning and codes, et cetera. So, that's our concern on the sewer project.
But it's just not, it's not a Planning Commission thing.
Right, but it's intertwined.
But it's, yeah, and so you should be-
That's our concern, so we need to be aware of all the initiatives going on. So, I participated in several meetings at Tumalo Elementary School, as well as all the Zoom meetings. I've sent emails to Tony Patty in making them aware of the code violation. I listened to Peter Russell claim there are not predetermined outcomes derived by the county for the future of Tumalo, and that, quote, "We are seeking Tumalo residents' input." But yet, I see contradictions. Again, no representation of Tumalo Planning Team. An RFP for the consultant for the sewer feasibility study, which includes a statement in that RFP, sell it to the community. That's not a feasibility study. Take a look at it. A proposed CET bus stop. And when I asked the transportation specialist, that was on her tag, what is the projected ridership to put a bus stop in Tumalo? Her answer, I don't know. Why are we spending time on that? Why are we spending resources? Why are we wasting Tumalo? Nobody in Tumalo wants a bus stop. They were going to put it on the school grounds, which is just absurd. Chris Doty aggressively chastised the residents for putting out a petition to stop the Tumalo sewer, yet he claims the community is in favor moving forward. My question to Chris and the Commissioners, who's the community? Is it two commercial property owners and a private business owner looking to exploit our rural community? Or is it the 300 residents that signed that petition stating they don't want it? It's expensive, and we don't want to subsidize the commercial properties need for a sewer. Again, I ask you to follow your code as much as possible and add a representative. You've received a copy of the code, and it clearly states, Tumalo shall have representation. And you want to delay your adherence to the code to June 2023, which is too late, as everyone has stated. I would just like to ask you this. If you were running for county commissioner position and you're not allowed to campaign for your own race until November 9th, you think that's fair? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Peter. So, you're available if anyone wanted to talk to you now? Great. All right. Are there any raised hands on Zoom, Stephanie?
No.
No raised hands on Zoom, okay. And as I mentioned earlier, people who've signed up for the safe parking, you'll get your moment in a few minutes. So, can we go to our consent agenda?
Move approval of consent agenda. Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair Voltes. And I did want to thank Bill Anderson for his service on the Deschutes County Facilities Project Review Committee. He moved to Creek County, and he's been missed, but I believe he has been replaced. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, Bill. Action item number seven. That's you, Janice, I believe?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Janice Garsot. I am Director of Health Services, and I am here today to ask for your consideration and signature on Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council Agreement Number 2022-782. What this agreement does in effect is move the remaining balance of House Bill 4004 workforce, Behavioral Health Workforce Stability Funding to a expended fund that allows us to expend to continue efforts to recruit and retain behavioral health workforce staff. The balance at the moment is just under 800,000. It's not 866 because since the time we put together the Board Agenda, we have had additional investments in staff in the form of retention bonuses. That amount represents less than the 25% that the bill allowed some flexibility for. And placing these funds in a separate fund, we have been told by the OHA and by our County Finance Department satisfies the requirement under that piece of legislation that we expend the dollars by December 30th, 2022. If we don't expend the dollars, we give them back for other purposes at the state level. So, that is really the decision that's before you today, Commissioners, is to review that contract and consider approving it and signing it if it be acceptable to you. I can tell you that so far, we have reduced our vacancy rate for our behavioral health staff that we were particularly targeting with these funds by 6%. So, we went from 17% vacancy rate in, I think, March or April when we started down this path to 11% today. So, we do feel that has, that effort has really made an impact. If we do, in fact, invest in this fund, we will then, in the spring, be planning how to use those dollars effectively to enhance recruitment and retention of staff. We will not be able to use it for wages. That ship has sailed, and it comes into port and ends December 30th. So, it would be for other kinds of incentives for recruitment, like training, tuition reimbursement potentially, if that's supported by HR, perhaps help with things like childcare if that's available to us. And that's still a planning process that we would undertake in the spring, early spring.
Interesting. Do we have separate funds for, like, completing licensing, Janice? I know it's like a two-year process or something. Could that be used for-
This could, so I'm very cautious about saying what it can be used for because every single thing we use it for, we have to vet with HR and with legal counsel to make sure it's within the rules around what counts as a wage incentive and what does not. But yes, we have talked about helping to cover tuition reimbursement, helping to cover licensure costs, helping to cover supervision towards licensure, and things of that nature.
So, is legal, is your stamp on this somewhere?
Yes, Commissioner, it is. We had some concerns early on based on the language of the House Bill. And since then, OHA has provided some written guidance. Janice made reference to that, indicating how they're going to be implementing that bill. And with that guidance, we're comfortable signing off on it.
Can we let this gentleman in if he wants to, if he's trying to get in a locked door? So, Janice, my question is, we're transferring this money over to COIC through this agreement. There are things we can use the money for, training, tuition reimbursement, maybe childcare. Can you walk us through a little bit more kind of how that money would flow out of COIC to those purposes? Like, will you be, basically be sending them, you know, like invoices or, you know, other triggers, basically, for them to cut checks?
Yes, basically, we would be invoicing them within, I mean, we're going to track these dollars really closely because there were some pretty, there was some pretty clear language around the intended uses. So, we would be submitting invoices for having expended consistent with the intended purposes of the bill and receiving reimbursement.
So, it's like we're just opening up a bank account with another organization so we don't have to send the money back. I mean, I'd almost rather keep it simple, send the dollars back, and knowing that we're a great partner with the state, and, you know, when there's other resource needs that they're going to come through for us. And I know you wouldn't even want me to speak like that, but, I mean, it's like we're adding two steps to money, which is kind of, I don't know, I don't really like it.
It's certainly one of the choices available to you to decide to send it back. I can tell you that the OHA has signaled to us very clearly, and so has the legislature, that they just wanted the dollars expended on the purpose it was intended for. And they gave us very little time to do that.
Right.
And most of the organizations that receive the dollars have looked at, frankly, less rigorous ways to put money in a fund. This is a pretty clear box around the funding, but that is-
But there isn't even real clarity on what, how it will be spent in the future.
Well, there will-
I mean, there's a menu of things that could happen.
Well, we would be responsible to draft that plan, and I would certainly be willing to bring that plan back to this group if that makes this decision feel like there's more accountability around it.
Well, and so, a person gets a job and they work for a salary, and then there's this extra fringe account in some other organization that we're going to have to make a plan about, that we're going to have to make sure OHA supports it. I mean, it just kind of defocuses somebody working for a wage to do good things for the people. And I'm just thinking philosophically about this, and-
Those first two things that Janice mentioned, training and tuition reimbursement, I mean, if we have a great person working for us, and the difference between them staying with us and growing somewhere else is us being able to provide, you know, training and, you know, more credentials and more licenses and additional education so that they can stay with us and even do something greater, that's pretty exciting. And the idea that, to date, these funds have allowed us to bring down our vacancy from 17% to 11% is also pretty exciting. And, you know, so, behavioral health has demonstrated great success in deploying these funds for the intended purpose. And I, I'm very supportive of the idea that we would, that we would move these, move these dollars to an expended fund and be able to continue to deploy them in really smart ways to help strengthen our capacity at the county.
Janice, do you have the exact number now, since it's no longer 866,000?
It is 799,471 that remains unexpended. And to be really concrete, the examples I would give is currently the county has a policy that allows us to engage in tuition reimbursement funds if the funds are available. We typically don't have the kind of funds available that allow us to really support our own staff who are doing good work for us at a salary to further their education and stay with us. And so, that is the sort of thing I imagine using these dollars for. The other thing that we're finding is that in recruitments now, we're having to spend hundreds and thousands of dollars to list our recruitments with expensive subscriptions in order to get the word out about positions. That's not a cost that's covered anywhere in our budget currently. These funds could potentially be available to cover the cost of doing things of that nature. So, very concrete purposes, not intended to continue the phenomenon of just bonusing people to do their job. That was a one-time moment to stop the tide. That is not the intention for these particular funds.
I believe at one time you said that the bonuses was working maybe 75% of the time. It was a two-year commitment? Is that-
I don't know. I mean, we have had some people pay back incentives. So, there are people that even with the bonus incentive have taken positions elsewhere, have had family situations come up, have made transfers in-house that required them to pay back portions of their bonus. So, I don't know the percent of the time. I know the percent decrease in vacancy rates for behavioral health clinicians.
Okay, so, we're down to 11% now?
We're down to 11%.
Okay, good. All right. So, any further discussion? Can we have a motion?
I move approval of Board Signature of Document Number 2022-782, an agreement with Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council to provide a one-time payment in the sum of $796,000.
99?
99, sorry. $799,000 for the purpose of HB 4004 Workforce Stability Grant.
I'm not going to second it.
Okay, so, it was actually 799,471, is that correct?
Yeah, and because the amount can go up and down depending on payback, because we can't just put that money back in our own bank account, we have to put it here. Probably to have the up to 25% amount is the wisest thing for the total.
You're saying, so leave it at the 866?
I would just leave it and know that we can fund it at the level we have funds, and that balance may change by several thousand up or down.
Change my motion to $866,000.
It's been very fluid.
Okay, I will second it. I would like to see the letters from OHA that signify that what we're doing is acceptable.
They're emails?
Emails, yes. Love to see them, just to put it in my record so that I know. Any further discussion?
As I say, I'd just like to be a partner with the state and if there's resources needed in the future, I'd rather have a lot cleaner transaction than working with another organization just to hold down money for us. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Will we be paying ten percent on, of their fee to keep it? Five percent? Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
No.
And the Chair of the House?
Thank you, Commissioners.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, we have item number eight. I believe, Kristy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Kristy Ballinger, Deschutes County Property Management. We're here today for your consideration of document number 2022-793, a ground lease with Mountain View Community Development for Redmond Safe Parking Program. We also have here Rick Russell, who's the Executive Director of Mountain View Community Development. So in essence, this lease would provide approximately 1.07 acres of county-owned property in Redmond off of Southeast Seventh and Evergreen for the use of safe parking. The initial lease term would be for ninety days. And prior to the expiration of that initial ninety-day term, Mountain View Community Development would come back and report back to the Board of any concerns or issues. At that time, the Board could make the determination to move forward and we could then move forward on one-year lease terms that could be terminated with a ninety-day written notice to either party. So with that, pause and answer any questions you may have. And Rick is also here to answer any questions.
Well, I'll acknowledge this, so this isn't a public hearing on the matter, but we'll see where we go today. You know, these, these were going to be auction possible properties and I didn't support pulling it off the auction, so now they are available. I do support the safe parking program and giving this a try, though. So it's like we, we kind of meandered a little bit on this one or in the decision space. But as I do, I, I support safe parking at this time as a starting point.
Great. No comment? Okay, Rick, is there anything you wanted to add to your presentation? And we do have some people that wanted to speak and, because we've already told them that it's on our agenda that this is the time that they could say something now.
Yeah.
You just want to use a couple minutes?
Yeah, thank you. Just to refresh the conversation, our program is a pretty basic one.
Oh, do you want to identify yourself with the record and all that?
Yes, thank you. I'm Rick Russell and I'm the Executive Director for Mountain View Community Development. We operate safe parking in Redmond. The very basis of our program, folks who are living in vehicles. And we provide ninety days at a time a place for them to be that's safe and legal. The city code says no more than six vehicles at any location for this particular property. We're limiting it to four as a maximum just because of the topography of the land. We provide case management, screening, placement. We provide liability insurance. We provide garbage services, sanitation services. Our participants agree to a ninety-grade, ninety-day agreement, a handbook that they will sign acknowledging they know the rules that they'll live by and the, and should they not live by those rules, the processes that will unfold for them to exit the program. We do background checks. We coordinate with HMIS, the, the cloud-based...
Homeless Management System.
Homeless Management Information System to, to make sure we're coordinating well with Neighbor Impacts and Thrives and, you know, the other entities in the area. We do an intake process and we refer to other, other services. One note, just a minute, there's a photo on the screen, and this is just a, a little sort of sweet success story for us from us just last week. One of our participants who'd been with us for several months and had some complicating factors in his life, but we were able to work with a couple of different entities. And he is moving on to a, a long-term RV park at market rate that he is paying for. And that was a great success. And, and the day came to move and one of our volunteers is there with his pickup to help him move. And then one of our other participants who had, who had come through the program and exited earlier, and they had been neighbors in our parking lot, had, had come back to help him. And it was just a very sweet moment and for us, just a little snapshot of what success looks like for this program to transit, transition people on to a more stable environment. The other participant in the program transitioned on to a shared, he's got a roommate and he's renting a room in a house. And that's the kind of thing we like to see.
Thank you for that story.
Yeah.
All right.
Open to public comment and all...
Yes, yeah, that would be, I think that would be appropriate. Bob Pohack, Pohack, would you like to...
Commissioners, staff. My name is Bob Pohack. I'm here today speaking of my role as Lead of the Jericho Road Outreach Program in Redmond, Oregon. For that, we typically come in very regular contact, at least weekly, sometimes more often, with individuals who are homeless and primarily, although not entirely residing on the east side of town, Seventeenth Street and eastward somewhat, especially over the last couple of months, with individuals who are in trailers, cars, RVs, on the city streets or in some of the city parking lots. I want to thank you very much for considering this location for additional safe parking in Redmond. As you've heard from, from Rick, safe parking provides safety, number one. It's a very important criteria for getting homeless individuals into a place where they can do something about finding more permanent housing. They have fewer day-to-day concerns, worries, and trauma because they're in a place where they can be for a period of time where it's easier to find water and often food and clothing and certainly sanitary facilities. They also, very importantly, have case management. They have individuals who come alongside them and help them navigate, if you will, the system and find things that, that make housing available for them. Very often, what doesn't show up, and that's what I want to comment on today primarily because you hear a lot about what does happen in an affirmative way. But what I think will easily get lost is that by having safe parking, individuals who have had essentially no choice up until now but to head to Seventeenth Street or the Junipers can go somewhere else where they have far fewer concerns, they have assistance. We have come across two individuals, I have come across two individuals in the last four months who are, who were either in the Junipers or along Seventeenth Street, and they asked about safe parking. I don't know whether they were accepted or not, I haven't followed them individually, but that is what we are trying to do. Safe parking is a piece of the puzzle. Outreach is a critical piece of the puzzle. Affordable low-income housing is, of course, a critical piece of the puzzle. And I would like to see you add to the piece of the puzzle called safe parking. It's what we have available for emergency transitional shelter in Redmond right now at a lower or medium barrier entry point. We need more of it. And I ask that you also continue working with Mountain View Community Development to find more locations. They have funding for up to forty. I am hopeful that they will find the locations for forty because I believe we need that many or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you so much. And we do have letters supporting the program from David Welton and...
Downtown elect only.
And Sandy King. So, next person, let's see, Mike Mormon?
My name's Mike Mormon. I live at 354 Southeast Fifth Street in Redmond, just about a block and a half from the proposed site. I do have multiple sclerosis, so I am going to read this. I will ask that if you have any comments on what I am saying that, so my train of thought isn't interrupted, hold it until after I'm done reading. I want to start by saying we are not against the safe parking program at all. We have the utmost empathy for, for most of the homeless people and their numerous situations. Our family and friends have gone out on numerous occasions at the corner of Seventeenth and Greenwood and have prepared either breakfast, lunch, or dinner for as many people as we could afford. And we will continue to do this. Like I said, we are not against the safe parking program. We are against the use of this particular site for the program. We already have the heaviest homeless concentration in Redmond and you think that it's a good idea to add more. I think that's paramount to pouring gasoline on a fire. Two blocks from this proposed site, there are literally hundreds of homeless campsites on BLM land. Many of us have had numerous instances of people trespassing on our properties and stealing items from our yards and siphoning gas out of our vehicles. My wife and her mother, over a four-day period, scoured the entire neighborhood during different times of the day to ensure they would contact as many of our neighbors as possible. This includes our business neighbors as well. Ninety-seven percent, I'll say that again, ninety-seven percent of everyone contacted do not want this particular site to be used for safe parking. Seventy-three signatures were obtained and we sent each of you copies of those signatures via certified mail. And out of seventy-three signatures, only two people were in favor of this proposal. Ninety-seven percent do not want our already burdened neighborhood to be burdened even more. So we sent you three commissioners the signatures on a Friday and miraculously, Commissioner Adair shows up three days later, the very next business day, the very next business day, the commissioners had received that packet the very same day she showed up. She showed up to walk the neighborhood and to talk to people about their feelings about the proposal. She claimed she had already scheduled to walk the neighborhood even before receiving our petition packet of signatures. She says that was just a coincidence. I don't believe in coincidences from politicians, especially a few days before elections.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Kristy, was that on our schedule on Friday? Did we not have confirmation that we were going to go on Monday? Because I was going with Kristy.
Correct.
Yeah. You know, I really felt badly for your neighborhood and I...
Can I continue because I'm going to lose my train of thought here?
Well, I just wanted to set the record straight. I had it on my agenda because I cared about your neighborhood.
Um, so going back to your visit, she literally only went to about six homes. I'm not quite sure how you can get the pulse of any neighborhood by knocking on a few doors, considering it took my wife and her mother four days to thoroughly accomplish that. But I know, but I know the people she spoke with and I also know they told her they did not want the safe parking project in the proposed site. So with the signatures you received and the many trek that you made through our neighborhood, every one of you commissioners now know without a doubt that our, that your constituents in this neighborhood do not want this project in this neighborhood. Yet even though all three of you commissioners know exactly the feeling of ninety-seven percent of our neighborhood, I got a phone call from Commissioner DeBonne stating that the safe parking project at Seventh and Evergreen will happen. That tells me this decision had already been made and you three do exactly what you want and every word that comes out of your mouths is just lip service. You three commissioners really don't care about the people of our neighborhood and what we feel or think. You three commissioners are voting to office to do the voter's will, yet you are voting your own will and not ours. I really don't understand how, knowing what our neighborhood feels about this project being in that location, how you guys can basically say that it's already a done deal. That's all I really had to say. I would appreciate you voting the will of this neighborhood and not your own.
Thank you very much, Mike. I'd have to check my records. I know I left my card at a lot of homes. It was more than, what did you just say, six or seven? So left my card, my personal number with a personal message to call me. Nick, is, is the timer working? All right, Ron? Ron Hagan?
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and talk very briefly about our safe parking program. My name is Ron Hagan. I live at 1201 Southwest 28th Street in Redmond. I have been an active volunteer in the safe parking program, particularly in the shower and laundry program at Mountain View Community Church for the last nine months that I've lived in this community. I'm also more recently become a member of the Board of the Mountain View Community Development Corporation, which, as you've heard already and you know already, is actively involved in the management of the safe parking program. I have a bit of a cold, I'm sorry about that. I'm having a hard time speaking clearly, but I wanted to share with you just very briefly my experience with that program and the participants in that program because it's been uniformly positive and reflective of a number of particular things. First of all, the participants in that program, given the screening, the placement, as well as the case management services, are clearly aware that what they're involved in is a temporary housing remedy for their particular situation. And they have been very, very willing to follow the rules of the program on a uniform basis to date. Many of the program participants are also actively engaged, as Rick has already said, in the counseling and the case management services that are available. We've already shown an example of one of the folks that I've been actively working with in the shower and laundry program, having been successfully relocated to a permanent housing situation after having been directly involved in the safe parking program at Mountain View Community Church for a number of, for a number of months, number of, actually it was a little over a year, I believe. Let me also share with you, though, one other individual that's, I think, reflective, one of the individuals that I've worked with that is, I think, reflective of what the good things that this program really truly can provide and how they found themselves in a homeless situation to begin with. His name is Robert. He's been homeless for almost a year now. About a year and a half ago, he developed a debilitating illness which caused him to lose his job as well as his housing. He has, because of this program, our shower and laundry program in particular, been able to reestablish himself to some degree. He's slowly healing and in that process, you know, has recovered some of his health, to the point where last week, he actually dropped off his walker so that our church and our safe parking program can use that in the future. I, I strongly believe that this kind of expansion of the program into the Seventh and Evergreen area will lead to additional very positive results. That people understand that this is a temporary solution, that they're being counseled and helped in finding and securing permanent housing. And most of these folks at the same time already have, at least a large number of them, many of them have employment. So, but, you know, it's, it's really important that we give them the opportunity to right themselves and to avail themselves of the kinds of services that the safe parking program can provide them. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to offer these comments.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time for, and believing in the program. Lena Berry? Lena Berry?
Hello, my name is Lena Berry, and I live at 839 Southwest Cascade Avenue in Redmond. I'm here in support of the Safe Parking Program. I would like to start by asking how many of our commissioners and our audience here knows who David Savory is? Do any of you three specifically know? Anyone else? So, you might recall David Savory, two years ago, he was the disabled person who froze to death outside of the Rite Aid and Bend. And so I would just like to take this time to remind you that while we, you know, have the privilege of having time to talk about things and discuss things, it's actual people's lives that we are discussing here. We, we, but actually, Mountain View Community Development actually currently has in hand funding for forty individuals or families that this could be helping, and they currently have fourteen people on a waiting list. And we need your help, and I am asking you today to partner with us in approving this location and also identifying more locations. And I'd also like to point out the fact that with county and city swaps, land swaps, I guess you would call them, the area on Northeast Seventeenth and east of that, which, you know, was, is BLM and is switching into city, is where a huge portion of our houseless community currently is living in the dirt, in the Junipers, and they are going to be misplaced from this bad situation that they're already in with nothing identified to, to help them or a place for them to go. So I'm asking you to work with these proven programs, say yes, find more spaces. And remember, David Savory and people like him don't have the, the privilege and the opportunity of waiting in that time. So thank you for considering that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lena, for reminding us. Steve Curley?
Good afternoon, excuse me, I can't get my voice here. Good afternoon, commissioners. It's good to see all of you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Curley.
Thank you. I am here speaking on behalf of the Safe Parking Program. I don't know that there's a lot that I could say that you don't already know. I know that the three of you have really, you, I think you understand this program, and I should back up. So I am the Director for Redmond Economic Development in Redmond, so speaking with that hat on. And so then back to where I was, I don't know that there's a lot I could say that you don't already know about this program. I think Rick has done a really good job of creating awareness and improving the program out. I think the things that I would like to say is that, in my knowledge of the program, you know, homelessness is affecting economic development in Redmond. And I say that with the idea that we don't want to leave people behind. People are important, right? But I think we need to acknowledge that there are other people who work at businesses who have fears of people who are homeless and some of the activity that happens, you know, in, in, on the east side of Redmond. Safe Parking Program is a great solution for those who are a good fit for the program. Not everyone is a good fit for this program. There are a number of, you know, homelessness, drug addiction, mental health, it's a very complex problem. But for this, for this program and for the people that it's assisting in the way that it's doing it, it's very positive. And I would say that there's a lot of fear, obviously. You've heard fear. I think, you know, fear would be justified being around certain homeless people, but for the people that are in this program that are vetted, that are working with a case manager, these are not those people. These are people who are trying to reconnect with their community. They're trying to get back on their feet. And I would say, even from my knowledge of how this works with, how Redmond PD works in the area, making sure that these sites are, they're probably more safe than if there's not someone there, because they're making sure. And, and I know of an instance where someone tried to just kind of move in on a, on a safe parking location, and Redmond PD said, no, you have to go through the program, and they had to cite them, whatever the technical term for that is. So, I, I'd just like to say...
They trespassed them.
Trespassed them.
That's what legally happens, because the police chief did meet with us after Kristi and I toured the community, just to find out what we, what the City of Redmond would be willing to do, and the police chief, it's called trespassing.
Thank you, Commissioner, that's correct, yeah. So I would, so with the amount of attention and focus on this, with this site, and with, and with the neighbors there watching, I actually think that this will be more safe. And, and I understand fears, but I just, that's my personal opinion, and we certainly need more tools like this to help address this very complex issue, and so that's my support of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, thank you for joining us today. It looks like it's Johanna Johansson-Wenberg?
Hello, Johanna Johansson-Wenberg. I live at 42025 Highway 20. I work at Thrive Central Oregon. We are a nonprofit here in central Oregon that connects folks to existing resources. Primarily, we do housing, housing supports, basic needs, just about anything, we do it. The, I would say the hardest part of our conversation is, well, really, we can't connect people to what doesn't exist, right? So we are working with folks who are the defined working homeless. They're losing their housing left and right. Our eviction rate is exponentially increased right now, and folks and their families and young children are looking for a place to go, and we have very limited options. There's wait lists for shelters. We're getting calls about kids being in their cars, kids and their parents living in their cars with their pets, is their family of four or five, and they have nowhere to go. So, you know, respectfully to someone who has already spoken, you know, we're not going to see an influx of hundreds of people flocking to this one area. We have clearly defined that there will be four family units available, so that is a very controlled point of which people will be staying safe, staying warm, access to their basic needs, like accessing a bathroom or a shower and doing laundry, something that we take for granted each and every day. You know, I also hear a lot of talk about, we, we support the homeless, and we go out and we do X, Y, Z, we just don't want to do it here. We need to respectfully deter and not use that language, because if it's not here, where is it going to be? And the rate of homelessness is not going anywhere. It's, if anything, it's increasingly, it's increasing daily. So I think we need to be very aware of that statistic, that folks who have been housed for years are no longer housed, they're working, their kids are going to school, and they have no place to go. There's no hotel vouchers, as much as people think people are living in hotels. We have very limited number of shelters, again, in our community, and that's a long waitlist for women and children and families. So when we're interacting with folks who are working and living, they have, they have nowhere to go. And I would also like to just note that statistics can be daunting. I could, I feel like I would, it'd be safe to say that ninety-seven, ninety-seven percent of folks in here support this program. So, thank you.
Oh, could you do me a favor? Could you fill out an address on this form?
Sure.
For our record? And is the shepherd, is the Bethany Mann full in Redmond, the one where we are funding for the ADA?
They do have a waitlist, so...
They do have a waitlist, no?
Yes, so all the shelters in our community have waitlists, even our Second Street Shelter, they're at overcapacity, generally with people waiting in line in the cold right now. My friend would like to, you know, that the winter shelter has just opened, so they just opened, and it's been in very cold the last week and a half. So we have limit, very limited options in our community.
Thank you for that. Bonnie Sullins?
Bonnie Sullins, 354 Southeast Fifth Street in Redmond. And I'm the one, along with my parents, that couldn't be here today, went around to our neighborhood, gathered those seventy-three signatures. Ms. Joanna just said she doesn't want to hear about what I do or what I don't do to try to help the homeless. I have family members that live out in the BLM Junipers right now. I had to kick my son out of my house back in April for various reasons, was homeless. Trespassing doesn't work, sorry. Had to call him, call three times on him to, and he got trespassed, and he kept coming back, and the police didn't do a thing about it. Trespassing somebody doesn't matter at all. I do go out. I do have compassion for these people, because I have family members out there. I've been off work for six months myself, recovering from knee replacement surgeries that went wrong. I still take money out of my pocket to go help these homeless people, feed them. You know, I take clothing out to them if I have any that's available, blankets, sleeping bags, those kinds of things also. They are starting to move closer to Ninth Street, not just out onto the BLM land. My concern is putting these four cars here, is it's just going to draw more people coming across the Ninth Street. Couple of years ago, we had a fire. I had to, you know, leave my home because one of the people out on BLM land started a fire, and we got, you know, evicted from our homes for the day because of the fire. It's muddy out there right now, there's no, they don't come and snowplow Seventh Street, as you guys, I'm sure, have heard, you're supposed to be getting that apparently done if, if this happens, but...
We, yes, City of Redmond said they would do that.
Once, you know, once, if this program does end, it's, that's going to go away, because it, you know, it's, there's not going to, there's only one house on Seventh Street, and it's just not, it's not the best area to put these cars at. I, on October 3rd, went to a meeting at the church, and I suggested doing it at the Deschutes County Fairground. Its pavement is cleaner, there's lighting, there's water hookups for the travel trailers or the motorhomes, there's electric for the motorhomes, and they would be able to use their own showers. You can still bring in the restrooms, you can still bring in, you know, for, for their laundry, if that's what you want to do, and there's trash facilities. I live at the, the bridge on Deschutes and Fifth Street that they frequently use. I'm always picking up their trash. I've had my gas siphoned, I've had numerous things stolen from my place. I'm not saying these four people that are living in these cars are going to do that, but it's just, it's not getting any better. It's, it's getting worse. I've lived in that area for fifty-seven years. It's not getting better. It's, it's worse. It's, I, I am not, I, I think there's other areas that, that you guys need to look at, bigger plots of land. The land, as Patty went out and, and looked at, is not very big. I'm not even sure I could put my travel trailer on there and, and, because I own, you know, I own a travel trailer also, there's not enough room to put a travel trailer. I'll say four of them out there, if that's what they have. The way that the canal ditch goes down into, you know, the, the little bit of area is like a hundred and fifty square feet, maybe, you know, to be able to actually park, it's just not, it's not a safe area to put homeless people at. I'm sorry. I understand they're trying to work, and they're trying to get their lives back together. It could be me. Like I said, I was out of work for six months on, you know, medical, and I didn't have income coming in. I understand that, and I feel bad for people, yes, I do. But this is not the area to put them at.
Bonnie, thank you for coming in today. I hope you're back to work now.
I am.
Thank you. It looks like Dana Dennis?
I'm Dana Dennis. I live at 772 Kestrel Court in Redmond. I serve on the Safe Parking Board, and we are a proven program with a framework to help homeless folks who are ready to transition to more permanent housing to make a positive change in their lives. Our social worker helps set goals and then facilitates them taking steps that lead towards stability. To be in the program, they have to abide by guidelines and work with the social worker. We've had success and want to continue to help the people, homeless people of Redmond. Currently, we have three families and thirteen individuals or couples on the waiting list, and we can give these folks a safe place to be and a hand up out of homelessness. The homeless are here, they're not going away. Let's have a thoughtful, planned, proven program for helping. If not, they'll be here, but without the support to move forward. Let's be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dana. And you said you are on the board, correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, that is at the end of our, people that have signed up. Anyone on Zoom? Stephanie? No one on Zoom? Kristi, should we bring Rick back up, or do you want to add anything at this moment?
The only thing I'd add is just our commitment to continue to communicate with neighbors, and always appreciated their concerns and the multiple conversations I've had with, with neighbors, with Mr. Mormon and Ms. Sullins in particular, and Bonnie's parents as well. And these are very tough situations, and I understand. Mr., one of the neighbors, Paul, asked me, you know, would I, would I do this in my neighborhood, in my house? And, and so I certainly appreciate their concerns, and I don't dismiss them one bit, and I only commit, if this moves forward as a partner, to, to do everything I can to communicate them, with them forthrightly, and always keep those lines of communication open, to make this the best possible experience it can be for everyone.
Thank you. Rick, you were at the meeting with us after Kristi and I walked the neighborhood?
Yes.
What were we told by the City of Redmond? Can you repeat that for us?
Yeah, we had, we had two folks there. We had our Chief of Police, Devin Lewis, speak to, you know, what can policing look like and the ability to trespass folks, and he affirmed their, their ability to, to do I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but he clearly stated the ability to trespass folks, and, and the ability to do that in safe parking is actually easier than it is even in someone's private residence, where someone can have residency, as I understand it, even though they may not be on a signed lease. And so he affirmed their ability, and, and that law enforcement certainly knows of that location and will be keeping an extra set of eyes on it. And then from the city development, John Roberts, talking about an issue that Paul rose, about snow removal, and saying that they would elevate that, that particular road would move up higher on their list for priority, snow removal, by having safe parking there. And so that was encouraging to hear from them. That's my best recollection of those conversations.
That's what I said, and, and that what I was really concerned about was when I listened to the community at the church that evening, I felt like they had been a bit ignored by, let's say, law enforcement and things, but actually, the chief had said that, I believe, west of, like, Bar Mart, that area, he had more calls, they had more concerns, and that they didn't, do they not have, like, two officers that are constantly driving around the entire city? And, you know, it sounded like they had regions. So that's, that was something that I felt better about.
Yeah, I think they've got five or six officers on duty at, at all times.
At all times.
Kind of a couple different zones, and I think this neighborhood is in the north zone. I realized this recently when I did a couple of police ride-alongs and learned that from officers in their cars. And, and there, I've also heard concern from, from neighbors, a concern that I absolutely share, which is that I, I think that the east side of Redmond is often asked to shoulder the burden of homelessness more than other parts of the community, and I, I share that concern. I don't think that's right. Redmond's a little bit unique in that it's sort of a, on the east side, industrial, and then commercial in the center, and then residential in the west. And so I understand why it, it gets more difficult to find land on the west. We are on the west side of town at Mountain View Fellowship. But I share that concern, and I, I intend to amplify that with our city, city leaders as well, that I think this is a, a good program and worthy to be considered in every, every part of our community, not just the east side of town.
Thank you for that.
What I, what I'd like to add to this discussion would, kind of plays off of that. And, and Ms. Sullins, I want, I want, I want you to know that... And, and Ms. Sullins, I want, I want, I want you to know that, A, we were, I was interested in exploring doing safe parking at the fairgrounds even before that, that open house event, and we are continuing to explore that idea. To me, the problem isn't getting better. And it's, it's not getting better right now because we don't have, we don't have enough of the services, and we don't have enough of the, the sites, the facilities, the, the shelter, the temporary shelter, the transitional housing that we need to actually put a dent in the problem. And the way that we fix that is by bringing places online. And to me, we need to be doing that everywhere. And I, I, I really hope that people in the Seventh and Evergreen neighborhood don't feel like, don't feel like we're, we're paking on you. I, you know, basically, basically all of the land that the, that the county owns in Redmond is on the table. For, for me, at least, we are exploring, you know, what can be done. Oasis Village out, you know, even farther out east, safe parking at the fairgrounds and safe parking at Seventh and Evergreen. So it is all on the table for, for, for me, as a county commissioner, thinking about the county's role in this, in this, in this process as a landowner. So I, you know, I want, I want to promise you that, that, you know, nobody's singling you out. And I, I really do feel that we, we need more sites, we need more services to turn a corner on this, to actually make some progress, because your concern that it's, it's not getting better, it's getting worse, is, is real. And without some, without some really active interventions in that, in that dynamic, it will get worse. So that if I vote for this, it is because I feel like it's something we have to do, and that it's something we have to do everywhere.
Well, so yeah, as I say, this wasn't a public hearing on the matter, so it wasn't published as this. I want to thank everybody for coming in and sharing your thoughts on this. As I say, when I called and explained that it's a done deal, we had already said, let's put this contract on, on the, you know, the agenda. So it wasn't planned for this, so just acknowledging that, you know, we kind of went back and forth a little bit on this. My vision is, is that, you know, we have people housed. We've got to keep it positive. We can't look for all the little corners of our towns and try to pack people in and little green spaces inside of a city. It's a function of land use, and this is where my fellow commissioner and I would disagree on some of this. But we've also have to have just people excited to be able to make a living and have somewhere to live. So there's a whole different scenario that we need to get going on this. This is the hard time for homeless issues, though. We've watched it grow over the years. We're the echo of COVID and, you know, social whatever's happening. You know, we saw the protests in Portland, and we're, we're just watching it happen. We've got to do something about it. This is a small step. I do apologize. It's close to your living arrangements now, but as I say, I support this as a step forward to figure out what we're going to do. All the people living on the east side of Redmond, it says no camping, and we're just watching it happen. So we've got people breaking the law already, so, you know, we've got to do something. This is an authorized supportive environment for a set of people that's going to move them out of that. But, yeah, where are we going to go in the future? We've got a lot of work to do.
Well, I'm just thankful that, Rick, you've been so hardworking on your program and the support for your program, and the fact that people actually are able to graduate from your program. I think it, it is incredibly important, and I, the fact that you operate it as a business, and yet a compassionate business, and I think that's, that's what's so important. And if we do this on a temporary, you know, we try it, we do it for 90 days, and it actually works, I think that's really, you know, that's the compassionate thing to do in today's world. When you read the story, I just read the story about Kim again, I think in the paper, and you see how hard she is trying to get forward and what she deals with. And, you know, I met, I personally met her, and I just feel like, oh, gosh, if we can just be that step up for her to find her way again, that's, you know, that's really what being a human is all about. So I, I appreciate you not giving up on us. Kristi, is there any point that you want to bring about this moment? I know that the insurance binder is attached.
Yeah, I think we're set, and this would be effective December 1st, so that'll provide Mountain View Community Development kind of their opportunity to figure out exactly who will be at the site and then to mobilize effective December 1st.
Okay, so our responsibility today, then, is to approve the document?
Yes.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I move approval of a ground lease with Mountain View Community Development to utilize county-owned property for the Redmond Safe Parking Program.
And I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBohn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Kristi.
We need a second motion as well.
There's a second motion required.
Okay, second motion, please.
Would be to authorize the property manager to sign the letter
Okay, gotcha.
to the city for consent.
Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner DeBohn. Commissioner Chang, did you want a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBohn?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes on the second motion.
Thank you, everyone, for your engagement on this issue.
Can we take a little break?
Okay, we're going to take a little break. I think that clock is wrong.
Yeah, is someone to change it right now?
Laura.
Thank you, Commissioners. Laura Skundrick, Management Analyst. So as you know, in fiscal year 21, Deschutes County received approximately $38.4 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding. And Deschutes County currently has $442,217 remaining in unallocated ARPA funds. So earlier this month, you had discussed an ARPA funding proposal from Friends of the Children. They requested $100,000 to expand their program to Le Pine, to open up that program. And the Board, excuse me, earlier this month, had requested that I return to continue the discussion. So I'm here today if you'd like to ask any questions or continue that discussion.
Well, I think Rachel's in the room and maybe she could come up and just, Commissioner Chang had a question about the sustainability of the program. So.
Can I cheer these with you?
Sure.
I don't know if it was included in our original request to you all.
Thank you.
Wanted to share our three-year funding plan for the first three years of our, our operations down in Le Pine.
So as, I do want to start with saying it isn't a three-year project that we're looking to start. When we enter a community, we make the commitment to being in that community for a minimum of 12 years. This first three years is a conservative funding proposal that we're asking for support from the county for. But our intention and, and our history of operations as an organization is to be a partner with Le Pine families and youth for the next decade plus. We have raised of that three-year budget half to date in just this calendar year alone. So I think that is a testament to our ability to fund varies. You also have questions about our sustainability as an organization. Best practice for nonprofits is six months operating costs on hand at all times. Our operations today stand at 18 months reserves. So we're a very healthy organization. We're a very stable organization. And we wouldn't make the decision to expand into Le Pine without confidence of being able to be there for the long haul and no matter what. There were also questions about our, our annual fundraising event, which two of our Commissioners joined us for on Friday, November 4th. Our goal for that event was to clear $150,000 and we're knocking on 200,000 from that event alone. That event in our five years of existence has doubled in size as a fundraising arm of our organization. And so certainly we will continue to grow. We are at capacity for the venue that hosts it today. So just last week, we started looking at other opportunities of where it could be in the future because we sold out and we had people, more people who wanted to come and support our work. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions or address any concerns moving forward, recognizing your job is one that I, I wouldn't be able to do on a good day. And I appreciate your consideration and listening.
Are you referring to our last two agenda items?
In general, it's not one day above all days. And so I just, I really appreciate the decision that's in front of you for the awarding of these dollars and investing them where they make the most difference. Lord knows there are, there are more causes that could benefit from this than could count. And so your position is not one I envy. And thank you for, for listening to me.
So I think you said last, two weeks ago when we had our discussion, you what, had 30 students in Ben, maybe 14 in Redmond?
Correct.
And this is going to add 16 in Le Pine, which is so important for that community. So, okay, all right. Just wanted to repeat the numbers. And the program is, is also in Sisters, but that's Circle?
Right. That isn't related to Friends of the Children.
Right.
Circle of Friends and Sisters is a different entity.
Right. Same program pretty much though, though, isn't it?
Um, no, they utilize volunteer mentors.
Oh, really? Okay.
Our mentors are, are salaried professional employees.
Okay. All right. Well, great. Well, I'm delighted to hear that you're raising 200,000. That's outstanding.
As was I. It was a good night.
Yeah. It was, it was a lovely venue. So are there any other questions?
Uh, so I, I like the program. I'm supportive of the efforts. I'm hesitant to provide these dollars in its capital. It, we've got other big projects and these are one-time dollars. And I think, you know, Commissioner Chang mentioned, there's a way to schedule in some funding support for this over time, which may be even as valuable or more valuable. So I, I just feel bad. We're now asking for ARPA again and I don't support this specific line.
Let me say, I absolutely agree with that. The, the component of ARPA that we asked for consideration under was under equitable education. As you've seen in, in recent weeks, the learning loss that was experienced during the pandemic has been catastrophic. More so, we know for communities that are undersourced, much like Le Pine. Within our region, Le Pine's high school graduation rate is the lowest. And so we're entering that, that community intending to partner, intending to be part of a solution. And if this is not the pot, that's okay.
Well, and yeah, Le Pine's going to be interesting. There's a lot of houses being built still. There's, there's housing starts that are happening, houses being sold, families moving there. You know, the economy's diversifying there. It's going to be interesting to watch it come together. Just on a parallel path, you know, you're a professional organization supporting the kids, but I, it just came to me a little while ago, you know, when I got, I went to the Park District in about 2004 and my son was going to be in kindergarten. We were Friends of the Children for a dozen years because I was deeply involved, as I say, a different track, but we were welcoming anybody, any family, any kid. And we were working hard for many, many years. So I just happened. I had, I did the same mission 15 years ago or more. So.
No, I, I really appreciate the intensive approach of, of the organization and the success you've demonstrated to aid. I'm really glad to hear that you had a successful fundraiser. I do, in, in, in my opinion, the appropriate place for us to be supporting Friends of the Children is as a service partner alongside like a really remarkable list of other nonprofit organizations that do tremendous things to, for our, for our community. So Friends of the Children has come in now as a, you know, a special projects award for, for two years. And I would be very interested in seeing that convert to a regular service partner role. But I, I'm, I'm not, uh, the, um, there, there are still so many outstanding, uh, you know, and not outstanding, awesome, which many of them are, but outstanding, uh, like we haven't gotten to them yet, requests for ARPA funding, uh, that, you know, if we are, if we do have this relationship with Friends of the Children, you know, as a, through special projects grants, potentially as a service partner, I, I, I would like to reserve the ARPA funds for some of the other projects. Or I, I mean, I, I might consider a smaller request, you know, for, within, within the funds that we have remaining. It's a lot.
Rachel, what, how much are we giving for the special projects? Was it 20 or 25 this year? 25,000? 20? Okay. So we gave 20. So, um, what if I'm making a motion then to give 30,000 of ARPA funds? Would that be something you'd consider, Commissioner Chang? I just, you know, you, you're, this is one of my very, what, who has suffered more than the kids of America and especially the kids of Deschutes County that didn't get to go to school for a couple of years? How far, how low are our scores? They're, they're the lowest. Is that any, is there any chance you would second that?
I would second that.
Okay. All right. So the chair moved for 30,000, seconded by Commissioner Chang. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So it wasn't 100, but.
30,000, there you go. Negotiated down.
Thank you so much.
Well, you know how much I appreciate your program and the heart you put into it and the mentors. Your mentors are outstanding. And I really think that's the difference because they are paid, they're college graduates, and the relationships that they continue.
And I want to add, because we were talking about retention and incentives, we've had 0% turnover in our mentors in the last 18 months. That's a testament to their joy and their work and what we do with kids in this community. So thank you, all of you, for what you do today.
That's exciting. Thank you for those. It's nice to really hear. They're a great group of people. All right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So item number 11?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Actually, it's 10. Sorry. Sorry, Will. I was ahead.
All good. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Your planning manager, Will Groves. I'm here to get you a little bit of calendar time back today, a little bit of time back on your schedule. Items 10 and 11.
We're going to go through it page by page.
Mm-hmm. So item 10 and 11, you know, you've, you've deliberated to approve these matters. We're working in coordination with legal to make sure we have decisions that'll be legally robust for both items 10 and 11 as they presume, presumably proceed to Luba. And we've got a little bit of tightening up to do on each of these. We were working diligently this morning and we wanted to bring you a solid product that would be, uh, that would be stand up in the state courts as best as possible. We've got a little more work to do. So we're looking to move these with your blessing to Monday, this coming Monday.
Blessings. Yes, you have our blessings. Wow. So that's what you're doing. Okay. Well, that was, do we need a motion on that?
We're going to get us through these fast.
Not later. Nothing that miraculous.
That's wordsmithing the decisions.
Exactly.
Okay. So 10 and 11 will be on Monday's agenda.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Save these.
Yes, that is fast.
Or there might be changes.
There'll be changes. So there'll be a fresh packet.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Well, you really did your job. Gosh, well. So now we jump up to item 12. Kyle.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kyle Collins, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. I am here today to discuss our rural ADU tech amendment process associated with Senate Bill 391. We scheduled this as a work session. I think it's probably going to work a little bit different than our, our kind of standard work session process. What I'd like to do just at the front end here is I'll give you three options on how you want me to proceed, starting from basically least amount of effort up through the full scope of everything that we've done so far. So as the Commissioners might be aware, we launched our text amendment process to start determining what rules might be in place for rural ADUs should they be implemented in Deschutes County. That started several months back. We've gone through one of our required public hearings with the Deschutes County Planning Commission. That happened back in September. They ultimately held a set of deliberations at the end of last month, which have all been included as a part of your meeting materials here today. However, what we've learned over the last several months is Senate Bill 391 has a direct connection to Senate Bill 762, the, the statewide wildfire mitigation bill that passed in the same legislative session. They're tied together in such a way in that no rural ADU program could actually start on the ground running until the state wildfire risk map from the Oregon Department of Forestry is implemented and finalized at a state level. As the Board is aware, a version of that map was released in June of this year, but it was ultimately rescinded based on public feedback. So they could go through a new round of vetting what that map actually said, going out to community members. And they've released a new timeline for the final version of that map, likely sometime in winter of 2023. So what this means for our project here today is regardless of what the Board ultimately elects to do, let's say, uh, these amendments are approved either as proposed or with alterations, no property owner could ultimately pursue any type of rural ADU construction on their site until this wildfire risk map. And so we're in a little bit of a holding pattern here until we have additional information. So the first option I'd like to present is we've sort of been working under the impression that we'd like to get these amendments over the finish line by the end of the year. However, it doesn't really change anything in the matter of on-the-ground conditions and people actually being able to come in, submit for permits and construct these. And so it may be.
So Kyle, there were like 4,000, you said could maybe originally, maybe they could happen, but now you're telling me that, that they, those 4,000 even can't happen?
Our, our understanding is that without the information from the Oregon Department of Forestry, because we don't know exactly what standards would be in place for those properties that are required for these additional fire mitigation standards, we, because we can't determine which property would actually fall into those categories and which would fall outside, the direction we have received, both from our state partners and other counties that have started a similar process is there's some, some legal risk associated with trying to actually adopt a program and have construction of these units prior to adoption of that, that map at a statewide level. And so.
So the, the connect, the legislative connection here is, that I want to ask about is this idea of taking a presumptive approach. So if, if the legislature could craft a modification to SB 762 or, or maybe to SB 391 that says, you know, if we just presume that this is, that this property is going to be in higher extreme risk and require people to proceed with the fire resilient building materials, can you move ahead? And that, I, I think that there's, I think we could get some legislative traction on that. So, um, you know, but on the, operating on the assumption that, that a bill like that could get passed very early in the session, is there, does that change our, our thinking about how fast we can be moving?
I think assuming that there is some legislative change in the upcoming session that remove this very specific, I think in this case it would be to Senate Bill 391 in particular, then yes, it would change a little bit of calculus on how early property owners might actually be able to move forward with whatever type of program we, we ultimately implement here. As it's written right now, though, it doesn't seem like that is a possibility.
I mean, because, you know, as a person who's been tracking the wildfire hazard risk mapping pretty closely, um, I know that, I know that ODF put those maps out, those draft maps out. I know that there was great outcry, but, um, it's hard for me to imagine the maps that are ultimately going to, to come out looking that much different. Um, we, when, when we did our own, um, you know, wildfire hazard, uh, risk mapping at the county level, the maps were pretty similar. In fact, our, our maps were, uh, you know, showed higher risk in, in a number of locations. Um, and, you know, basically that, the, where the risk classifications come from are, you know, are two factors, you know, ignition risk and then, you know, anticipated flame lengths. And, um, what I think will, will ultimately happen is that there's going to be a whole lot of properties that are included in the high and extreme risks because of ignition risk. And you can't change that. But then when the fire marshal or whoever comes out to the property to, you know, check out the defensible space, they're going to say, oh, you know, this is, uh, this is irrigated agriculture. The flame lengths are not going to be that high. So even though the, the possibility of an ignition is very high, uh, and that's why you're in the high risk, um, it, in terms of what the landowner is going to have to do, it doesn't mean that much in terms of defensible space. So I, I just, um, if we can just kind of get past, um, get past the assumption, the belief that, that the maps are going to be radically changed and people can just accept the, accept the, the maps that, that, you know, accept that the maps are probably going to look pretty similar to the way they were. And people can also get past this, um, uh, the, these arguments that, um, the fire resilient building materials cost more, which I have seen no evidence, um, you know, no, no, no meaningful evidence to indicate that that's true. Um, then we can just get on with it. So I'd like, I, I'm, I would really, I would love to see the legislature taking such an approach and I would love for the county to be, um, uh, you know, pushing for that, you know, and, and then we could get to our rural ADUs a lot faster.
Just, just to provide one more piece of context here, as you may have seen in your, your meeting packet today. So one of the recommendations that the Planning Commission ultimately did offer up is they did advocate for, at the very least, waiting until the state wildfire risk maps were actually adopted so that we could see what the, the final risk on the ground is, so to speak, prior to adopting any type of local program related to ADUs generally. Now, obviously, there's kind of an intermediary step that Commissioner Chang alluded to, which is if there's some change in the next legislative session that offers clarity on how these standards would actually be implemented, basically assuming everything gets built to the highest standard in Deschutes County or wherever it happens. They didn't address that specifically, but that is kind of an intermediary step that might happen.
Well, I support advocating, putting legislation together, see if we can disconnect the map. That's what we have already talked about as a lobbying effort. So we'll see what the state legislature, you know, what the appetite is, how organized it is, if it could come up early or maybe it would be one of the last things gets negotiated. Who knows?
We might get some insight to what's happening this week too, with going to Salem and seeing our legislators there, or, excuse me, Eugene this week. So hopefully, because I had asked Senator Finley a long time ago if he could divorce the two, and then I guess we just need a separation. Divorce is maybe a little too harsh.
I, I mean, I, I think that if, if that's different than the kind of presumptive approach I'm talking about, then, um, I have a feeling that'll be fought till the very end of the session. Um, but, you know, if we were to encourage the kind of presumptive approach I'm, I'm talking about, I'm hopeful that that's something that could happen very fast.
So the recommendations, there's kind of eight recommendations it boils down to and the.
So I'm, I'm welcome to go through each of the recommendations if you'd like from the Planning Commission. That's obviously going a little bit more into the details of the specific proposal. Or if you'd prefer to wait and kind of see what shakes out in legislative session and then we could have another more thorough work session at a future point to actually go through all of the recommendations and the history and, and context that's built into this. I leave it up to you, though.
Well, I will point out, I like that the Planning Commission had these properties both attached to no short-term rental and because we really want these for families or workforce housing. So I like that point that they brought up. And South County was, what, five acres minimum? And that, I believe that took out almost 800 ADU possibilities, but South County with their water situation, that seemed to be, um, you know, very, very good to point out. It seemed like they wanted to wait till this was all over.
Not just the Senate Bill 762. So I'll, I'll add a little bit more context if you have had a chance to watch the deliberations, which obviously is, is always helpful here. There's a lot of discussion amongst several members of the Planning Commission. They felt there were a lot of projects that were ongoing that might potentially impact a rural ADU program in Deschutes County. Obviously, Senate Bill 762 and the wildfire program were brought up a lot, and that was the only one that actually triggered a vote to recommend delaying until that final risk map was released. But there was also a lot of more general discussion regarding the comprehensive plan update, updates to our Goal Five, wildlife inventories. Some of the Commissioners wanted to delay this project until all of those kind of more nuanced things were, were resolved. But as I stated, only one of those actually triggered a, a passing vote, and that was the wildfire risk maps. But that is the general framework and context. I'll also point out that one of the reasons I think that may have happened is some of the Planning Commissioners were concerned that this might be their only opportunity to actually weigh in on the specifics of how the program might operate. So rather than simply stopping at a, don't adopt anything until all of this is resolved, whether it's the comprehensive plan update or the Goal Five or the 762 maps, they wanted to provide some context on how they thought a program should operate if the Board elected to move prior to all of this being resolved.
Yeah. So I don't feel real pressure to do anything today then. We can see what happens. I guess we need to work on, if legislative action happens, then, then our timeframe starts to matter again.
Correct. And, and if that's the way the Board wants to move, I can certainly check in and keep abreast of what's going on at the legislative level. And if it does seem like there's going to be a change that would facilitate moving this program forward, obviously, we kind of have everything prepared already. So it really would just be a matter of making minor tweaks and then.
So we think of this as a legislative code package? Is that kind of what this is? So as I say, I'm just thinking the time, the body of work, you know, some Planning Commission recommendation, Board of Commissioners, state law changes possibly, then we've just got a legislative code package to be processed.
Correct. So depending on what the changes are, if there were any changes from the state level, um, we would obviously have to make some, some minor tweaks to the way the actual code language itself is written here, local level. But that's a relatively minor change that we could bring forth fairly quickly.
Another thing I noticed that they said they wanted to live it to, limit it to 900 square feet total?
That's correct.
And including a garage?
That's correct.
And I'm like, how many, what is a two-car garage? How many square feet is that normally?
I believe we got an estimate from our building official for a one-car garage being about 400 square feet, somewhere in that range. So I extrapolate that out to 800 square feet. That was, that was kind of a general working estimate. Obviously, I think it depends on the garage.
That sounds like.
That's pretty.
They could have a garage in.
Big for a one-car garage. I think a, a one-car garage is maybe more like.
Yeah, what's, what's, uh, what's.
Well, tow by tow, I hope it's 144 square feet. So can you fit a car in that? What is it? Like a Mini? A Mini Cooper?
I think they were just trying to take a conservative approach generally. So, I mean, obviously, it depends on the specifics of what you're using your garage for generally. But yes, that was one of the recommendations from the Planning Commission. There's a lot of concern about the, the original language that staff had drafted related to that 900 square. that 900-square-foot usable floor area, which comes out of Senate Bill 391 directly, and the potential for, if, if that's not being limited towards the accessory components of the structure as well, so things like garages or storage buildings, whatever you happen to call them, there is a potential for abuse of that additional square footage that might subvert some of the language.
You mean, somebody could build something more usable and, and, than, and something that they would want on their own private property? Oh.
Yeah, somebody could, somebody could build an enormous shop on their, on their ADU and move in there, and then rent their house out as a short-term rental.
Play basketball on the shop.
No, but that was one of the...
We should tell them they can't do that?
It was a short-term rental.
That's silly.
We did address it.
So it'll be interesting to see where, where we go.
Senate Bill 391 creates a brand-new development opportunity property right, and there was...
Take what you can take, what we're going to give you.
Legislative...
So it'll be interesting when we get down to it here.
Well, 900 square feet is a single-wide manufactured home, can be, so, anyway, and that's like two, three bedrooms. I mean, definitely, we need workforce housing in our community, and I feel that pressure.
So just...
So, well, yeah, let's just bring it back when it, optimal time is, is my thought.
Kyle, you stay on this, just like Nick used to, and you, this is, you stay on it, because as soon as we know, we've got to do something.
I would, I would, I mean, to make my careful review of this package, not for, for nothing at this point, I, I would like to just mention a couple of things that I would, I want a little bit more background analysis on, the next time we look at this. One of my questions was, I, I was puzzled by the recommendation not to allow rural ADUs in the West Side transect zone, and I just would like to understand better what the, what the rationale was there. Yeah, I mean, if it was, if it was about fire, I mean, you know, the West Side transect zone was, was, I mean, you know, the, yeah, land use regulations around the West Side transect zone were put together very carefully because of fire, so, I mean, I, I'm not really understanding why, why...
I can give some additional context.
Okay.
So the commissioner that ultimately made that, that proposal and that motion was concerned that, one, one of the primary reasons for the West Side transect zone coming together as it did was to allow, as we've talked about, the whole transect concept, kind of a, a feathering of density out into the more rural areas of the county, specifically for wildfire protections, which you've already mentioned, but as, also natural space, open spaces, and wildlife habitat protections. And I think their thinking was, any additional density being allowed in this area subverts some portion of the original purpose of the transect, at least in that regards, and they felt it was inappropriate to allow additional density in these areas where there were these kind of built-in ideas about habitat protections, et cetera.
All right. My, my other two concerns, one was the short-term rental issue, and I do see, I, I do see a linkage between the short-term rental prohibition and intent and how big we let the, how big we let the, the overall ADU be. So I don't necessarily think that 900 square feet, including any garage, is, is enough, I mean, but, you know, I, I, the idea that we wouldn't have an enormous shop or a garage attached to a 900-square-foot structure, which would then encourage somebody to move out of their house and then use it as a short-term rental, that, that interplay is a concern for me. So I, I, I think it would be helpful to understand, overall, what the county's program is around, around short-term rental regulation, so that we can understand, you know, well, I, I mean, you know, at the most basic level, so that we could actually understand that if somebody does, does build an ADU and then turns around and starts using it as a short-term rental, like, is anyone even going to know? Or is that just a, a paper requirement from the state that, that we're going to ignore? So some, some information about, you know, some background about how we govern and manage short-term rentals in, out in the unincorporated county would be, would be helpful. And I also, the third, one of the third pieces I kind of wanted to, to learn more about was water supplies. And I, I know that, I, I know that, I, I think the question has been kicked around, well, you know, would this, would we require the ADU to be on the same well as the, the original structure? Would there be the opportunity for a second well? And I, you know, there's, there's questions about septic as well, but just to kind of get to the, the, the water use concerns, I, I'd like to understand whether the primaries, the primary dwelling, whether we're, I, I think the standard situation we're thinking about would be an exempt well, but if that's not, if that assumption is not correct, I'd like to know that, you know, like, what's the, what kind of situations are we putting these ADUs into? If they are on an exempt well, and they have access to 15,000 gallons per day from that well, it's, it's a lot of water. So, I mean, I would like to see the ADU be served off of the same well that, that is serving the primary residence, but I don't know how, I don't know whether that's reasonable or not. So if we can kind of get some water use analysis that helps us understand, you know, how much of that 15,000-gallon threshold or, or limit is being used, you know, inside a structure, how much is being used outside? You know, is it possible if someone is using most of their 15,000 gallons per day to just have them do some conservation things around their, around their home, to free up water that makes it pretty easy then to support the ADU as well? I mean, there's also, I, I'm, I'm guessing there's, there's a fair number of entities out there who are on a marginal well, because we see groundwater levels declining all over the county, and if there was any way that we could, we could learn more about that, kind of, how, how often will these ADUs be triggering somebody to have to dig in your well, anyway?
So I can, I can provide at least a little bit of context, I'm not going to be able to answer all those questions, I think some of those, I'll, I'll have to reach out to our partners at OWRD, but, but they have weighed in on this proposal in particular and given us some general context.
Right.
So, to rewind all the way back, Senate Bill 391 does actually allow jurisdictions to require ADUs to be hooked into the same well as a primary residence. That's not something that it currently says in our proposed amendments, but it does leave open that possibility, as that being a, a strict requirement that could be, be put in place. More generally, as it relates to exempt wells, which you're correct, most of these, because they're being used for residential purposes, fall into that category, OWRD has the perspective that regardless of you getting a secondary house, if you drill a second well, it doesn't allow you to double the number of exempt uses you have for an individual piece of property. And so even if you have multiple wells, you're probably still limited to a cap of a single exempt water right.
Okay. That's help, that's really helpful to know. So, so, yeah, maybe my concern about that is, is moot. You know, because it, yeah, I mean, two wells, you know, each adding up only to 15,000 gallons, that's, you know, that, that's the right that people have been given, but, you know, if it was, if adding an ADU basically gave you access to another 15,000 gallons per day, I would have some real concerns about that.
Yeah, and their, their perspective is, one, again, that's, it's, it's just the one per property, basically, and then they also have a general operating kind of standard of practice that they'd prefer to just see a single well, as few wells as possible on a property, mostly for issues around exposure to contamination associated with drilling additional wells, lowering water tables in very specific areas if you're drilling a bunch of wells on one property. And so I think they're, as much as possible, trying to avoid those scenarios. Ultimately, obviously, the issuance of those exempt water right permits are an OWRD function, we don't have a lot of control there, but that has been their perspective, both generally and about this specific program.
Thank you. So those would be the, the things, I guess you, you just answered pretty much all my water questions, but the short-term rental, kind of unpacking, unpacking the governance of short-term rentals in the county, it would be helpful to, to have some more background on it.
Of course.
Any other questions? So, we're going to stay on top of it?
Stay on top of it, and we can check back in a little bit later if any action... I can certainly take that into account in these amendments, and then we'll schedule another work session to go through everything once we have some, some more firm direction. Good?
Great. Thank you very much, Kyle.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, we're to item number 13. Here we are. Tanya? Tony, do you have any surprises for us today?
Um, no.
No? Okay.
I, I can.
Well...
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. Just, is my microphone okay, right? It's a little faded back there.
Is it okay?
Yeah, you, you all, okay. There were some issues last week, I guess. So I'm here to prepare the board for a public hearing about a week from today, almost to the hour, for psilocybin text amendments. So I'm going to do a presentation, and I'm going to share my screen. The presentation largely summarizes what was provided for you in your memorandum, slightly less detail in the presentation, some of it you've, you have heard before, kind of the history and the background of psilocybin, but I'm going to try to make it fairly quick, because I want to be mindful of everyone's time, but please stop me for any questions you have. I'll see that, okay.
Not yet.
No questions, or you can't see it?
No, we can see it now. It just started. Everything looks good.
There's always a little delay. Sometimes it's in my, my own brain. So, this is, as I said, a preparation for a public hearing that will be on November 21st, that's next Monday. First, I'm going to go very briefly over what the amendments are, then I'm going to just step back, provide a little bit of background, then drill down a little bit more into those proposed amendments. I'm going to talk about the Planning Commission process, their recommendations, and kind of how the testimony shook out, and then next steps. I swear, I'm going to move this. Okay, so, the proposal, first, it adds new definitions for terms relating to psilocybin. It adds psilocybin service centers as a conditional use with site plan review to the following zones: rural service center, commercial mixed use, Terrebonne Commercial, Tamlo Commercial, Sun River Commercial, Sun River Town Center, and rural commercial. It adds psilocybin service centers to allowable uses in destination resorts, and I will circle back about that. As a reminder, service centers are where clients go to receive psilocybin treatments under the guidance of a licensed facilitator. Next, the proposal, add psilocybin testing labs as a conditional use with site plan review to rural industrial and Tamlo industrial zones. And lastly, the most significant chapter, we add a new subchapter, actually creating time, place, and manner, otherwise known as TPM, criteria for psilocybin manufacturers of farm use, manufacturers of processing use, and I'll explain those in a moment, and psilocybin service centers. So, a little bit of background, some of this you're very well familiar with, but I'm going to go over it quickly, anyway. In November 2020, voters approved ballot measure 109, which legalized psilocybin statewide, subject to subsequent rulemaking, which is still underway. I believe they're beginning the public hearings on the last set of rules tomorrow. The county voted in favor for psilocybin in 2020, 52.8 to 47.2, as opposed to the state, which was 55.7 to 44.25. As we all know, cities and counties are automatically opted into the psilocybin program, this is different from how marijuana worked, and that program begins, as far as the OHA, Oregon Health Authority is concerned, on January 2nd, 2023. Measure 109 also allowed cities and counties to opt out, as we know, and this, this was recently referred to the electors. So as of November 8th, and these are not necessarily the official counts, but it's what's on the Clerk's website at this moment, the, the county overturned, the electors, I should say, overturned the opt-out ordinance, meaning there is going to be a psilocybin program in the county. Countywide, it was 56.3 to 43. almost seven. Unincorporated county was a little bit closer, about 52.96% in favor of overturning the opt-out, in other words, having the psilocybin program, to 47.04. Little bit of background on TPM, time, place, and manner. In addition to providing this venue for an opt-out, measure 109 also allowed for the adoption of reasonable time, place, and manner regulations for psilocybin businesses. So kind of the, the what, where, and how of how this would look on the ground. During deliberations of the initial opt-out hearing, the board did express interest in staff starting to go on that parallel track to create these TPM amendments. Recognizing that time is, time is crunched, this would have to, the TPM process would have to begin before the election happens. So, given that, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the TPM amendments that staff developed. That hearing was on September 29th and continued to October 13th, and I'll go into more detail about how that went shortly. So now to drill, drill down into the amendments themselves. First, the definitions. This is pretty straightforward, most of the definitions come directly from measure 109. Measure 109 was translated into ORS 475A in general, so if you hear us talking about 475A, that's what it means. These are just necessary because you have to have the definitions in code when you're talking about the, the various land youths, uses, excuse me. The, the one notable thing is, our definition separated out manufacturer as a farm use from manufacturer as a processing use. For the purposes of OHA licensing, manufacturer was kind of different how, than how it's defined for marijuana. So ORS's manufacturing includes manufacture, planting, cultivation, growing, harvesting, production, preparation, propagation, compounding, conversion, or processing, so pretty much everything, except for, except for the actual service centers. Whereas, as opposed to marijuana, there was a specific production and processing that were licensing types. So this kind of glommed it all together. For the purposes of our code, we separated those back out to be able to kind of address those things slightly separately. And just as a note, the OHA manufacturing licenses, they have kind of a subset of three possible endorsements: fungi cultivation, psilocybin extraction, and edible psilocybin production. So those latter, extraction and psilocybin production, are more like what we're familiar as processing, and the first is, like, growing. So we just carved those, those two definitions out to make it more clear, if you're applying for a license for a certain thing, it's very clear what you need to do within the land use context. So manufacturers of farm use, psilocybin-producing fungi is considered a farm crop, farm use, et cetera, and therefore it's permitted outright in the EFU zones. This is per the ORS. The proposed amendments also permit manufacturing as a farm use in forest zones, and this is a Planning Commission recommendation. I will again touch on this later, I'm kind of throwing the Planning Commission recommendations into this so you can see the whole package together, but I will go into a little more detail later. The fungi must be grown indoors, this comes from state statute. The setbacks from the underlying zone will apply to any manufacturers of farm use. There are separation distances of 1,000 feet from a school. This is from ORS regulations governing service centers, but staff chose to apply this to manufacturing as well. Where it says 500 if natural barrier, that's also from state statute, that just means if there's like a river, or a mountain range, or a highway, some natural thing, you're allowed to have just a 500-foot separation distance. It defines it more, more specifically in, in the code. The prohibitions, these come directly from the ORS. You cannot have a new dwelling in conjunction with psilocybin as a farm crop, and you cannot have a farm stand in conjunction with a fungi crop. So in other words, in most ways, this acts like most farm crops, but there are a few little caveats that have been baked into the, to the ORS, and we've reflected that in our code. Manufacturer as a processing use, this is fairly simple, it can be carried on in conjunction with manufacturers of farm use. So in other words, your processing can take place in the same place where you grow it. It's subject to the standards in Deschutes County Code, 1816-025I. That allows the small-scale processing of farm crops, under a certain size, to be able to be, to occur there, as long as it complies with sightings, the, all, all of the applicable sighting standards. It's a... If it's really small processing, less than 2,500 square feet, they're exempt from any sighting standards. Testimony we've received, in general, indicates that processing, as well as production, or excuse me, manufacturing as a farm use, is fairly small footprint, so that's just a little.
Tony, weren't they saying like 500 square feet would be?
That was one testimony in the very original.
Yes.
You know, it varies, but from, you know, we didn't get a ton of testimony, or the Planning Commission did not get a ton of testimony about manufacturing, but just in the correspondence we've received anecdotally, there has been, you know, it's generally really small. It's small, and you can stack it, and it's not, it's not, because the amount of product is so limited that's going to be allegedly needed in the state, one person, I think, at the opt-out hearing noted that a couple of big warehouses would cover the whole state's needs. I don't know, you know, I can't, that's not official testimony regarding this, but it is pretty small compared to something like marijuana.
I do. One thing that I think is important to consider, when we're talking about the size of a production or manufacturing facility, is that I would expect the manufacturing to be much smaller scale when it's in conjunction with a service center. Like, if you're trying to produce a crop for wholesale, export, sale, you're going to do a lot of it. When you're trying to produce something to be used in your own boutique operation, that's when I would expect the kind of, we just have a closet, and we, you know, like it's this big, it's as big as a closet, and that serves all the needs for our three therapy rooms, or something like that. So, when we get to the part when we're talking about service centers, I want us to be thinking about, like, I really do think that combining service centers and manufacturing is actually the way for us to have production be small-scale.
All right, moving on. Service centers, and this definitely has captured most of the attention in terms of testimony and just general thoughts. It's allowed as a conditional use with site plan review in the zones that already allow medical clinics, medical centers, or retailer service businesses. And this was chosen because the impacts of these, or the perceived impacts, would probably be similar or less to those existing uses. It wouldn't kind of go above that threshold. It's something where people, they show up, they go into this place, they're there for some undetermined amount of time, it happens all inside, or there can be some outside, excuse me, but it's not, it's generally in a building, and then they come out, very similar to a medical office or kind of service businesses. So this was staff's desire to focus it in these locations, and I should note that other counties that we've coordinated with have taken a similar track. As with the other zones, the setbacks from the underlying zone will apply. Separation distances, just like for the manufacturing, of 1,000 feet from a school, 500 if a natural barrier. Excuse me. Hours of operation, they are now proposed to be 6:00 AM to 11:59 PM. Now, this is a change, and I'll touch on it again later, but originally, it was more limited hours, but these hours, 6:00 AM to 11:59 PM, are the OHA hours. So it was deemed that that would be just simpler, cleaner, and there's additional reasons that this makes sense, and I'll touch on that when I talk about the testimony. Another kind of new addition from the Planning Commission recommendation is that service centers are allowed in destination resort zones, subject to the criteria in those zones. Service centers in EFU and co-location, this has been a big discussion point. As we know, EFU zone is the most restrictive zone per state law. It was designed that way, for better or for worse. And then there's a provision in ORS 475A that also states the operation of a psilocybin service center may be carried on in conjunction with a psilocybin-producing fungi crop. So this led to some conversations with the Department of Land Conservation and Development as what exactly does this mean? What can or cannot we do? And it was a very interesting conversation that kind of continued along. DLCD ended up kind of coordinating with the Department of Justice and produced an interpretation of this clause. And their interpretation is that psilocybin service centers would not be permitted as a standalone use on EFU land. You can't just kind of put it out there all by itself. However, they do see an interpretation where service centers could be, not necessarily have to be, but could be permitted as a part of another use that's already allowed in EFU, specifically either a home occupation or as a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. So these are the two doors that we're saying that they, that DLCD sees service centers could be co-located with manufacturing in the EFU zone. And home occupations and commercial activities in conjunction with farm use have their own chapters of the code and criteria, and there's, you know, there's a pretty high bar to meet. But these are the two doors that DLCD has seen a possibility to allow this in, and that kind of figured into a lot of how we shaped our testimony, excuse me, our code and our findings as well. And we can discuss that more later, but that was very helpful for us to get that interpretation because otherwise we were flailing a bit, to be honest. Testing labs, honestly, we have not heard any testimony concerning testing labs. Our impression is that it would be fairly minor. We are allowing them as a conditional use with site plan review in two different industrial zones. There's a lot of rules governing the testing in the OARs in terms of what they test for, how they do it, how they transport it, how they secure it. In general, it's for things like contaminants, the type of, you're only allowed to grow fungi in certain types of growing mediums, it's testing for that kind of thing, as well as the strength. So, that's a summary of the amendments, and now I'm going to quickly go over the Planning Commission process. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing, as I've noted, on September 29th, and that was continued to October 13th because there was a lot of public testimony. The written record, excuse me, closed on October 14th. About 32 written pieces of testimony were received, and another 24 people participated in person, about equally split between those two evenings. And I'll just say that both the Planning Commission and people who testified said that they really enjoyed the process. For what it's worth, all this discussion about the Planning Commission, they had a lot of, there was a lot of listening, a lot of questions, a lot of, it was just a really good process, and I'm just, you know, Planning Commission thumbs up. And they really thought about this carefully, and some of them ended up changing their minds from what they said that they originally thought. So it was a very interesting process, and I encourage the Commissioners to look at the record. All of those comments, the written comments, are available at this website. I realize it's a long URL, you can also just go to the Community Development website and just scroll down, and you'll see psilocybin, or you can email me.
Well, thank you, Tanya.
Yeah, I'll read them to you each over the phone. No, but I can help direct you to that if you need any assistance. In general, about 2/3 of the testimony, both oral and written, supported psilocybin as a treatment modality in general, and most of them felt that the current regulations are too restrictive. And we anticipated this based on the kind of conversations we had had and discussions about where this can and cannot occur. So a couple of the highlights of that, they really, the proponents of kind of having psilocybin really supported the need for overnight or multi-day stays, and they say it's really critical because this therapeutic experience, it's not short, it's really intense, you have to do a prep session with your facilitator, then you have your experience, which may or may not be the same day, depending on how you work it. That can be up to eight hours, it can be even more, you're working with this person, and then what's key, and I think this applies to other modes of therapy as well, is the integration afterwards. You know, you don't just have this really intense experience and then go home and say, "Okay, I'm good." You have to really figure out what happened, and they really stress this time and time again, that then this follow-up integration with your facilitator is really critical to kind of bring it all back together. And for that reason, they support it overnight, or the need for overnight and multi-day stays because it just can't necessarily be crammed into one single day. They recommended that the hours should reflect the OHA hours for similar reasons. We originally had 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That was basically a placeholder because we wanted to receive testimony. They testimonials just said that it was easier and cleaner to follow the OHA rules, it's kind of just less ambiguous, and it just gives a little more time, frankly. There is a provision in the rules that if it's 11:59 PM and the facilitator determines, you know, this person needs an hour more, there is a way to do that, and there's a mechanism that they have to, you know, report back to OHA the next morning within a certain amount of time. It's very, very specific about how you can do that, you can't, you have to be accountable. So this was determined to be a strong recommendation from a lot of people. The desire for rural and nature-based settings for service centers, and this was, again, due to the kind of nature of the therapy, the place that you're at is really critical. You're, a lot of people are going through this for PTSD and kind of other related trauma issues, and to do it where there's kind of noise and potential chaos, or a truck honking, or whatever it is, is not really sympathetic to what you're trying to achieve. So they really expressed the desire to have this kind of in a beautiful setting, nature-based and quiet. To that end, some testimony asked to consider allowing service centers in destination resorts, and this was an interesting one. We did not have this initially in there, but given the complications that we've, that staff has noticed, in terms of trying to be able to get to an overnight stay or multi-day stay, it's difficult. Destination resorts could potentially solve this problem, as you're having it in this rural, nature-based setting, and the ancillary uses and things like overnights, and maybe some of the other stuff you might want, it's kind of already baked into the resort as a separate use, but it's in that same place. So this was a recommendation provided from representatives of Pronghorn, which is now being rebranded as Juniper Preserve. It's preserve, not reserve, right? Preserve. So that was a strong testimony from them, as well as their supporters and their team. And lastly, the recommendation was to allow, another one was to allow manufacturing in forest zones as well as EFU. This is permitted by the state law. Again, the scale of this is anticipated to be pretty small, so they just, this was a recommendation that came from several testimonials, testimonials, excuse me. There were also some people who were against psilocybin in the rural county. A great deal of written testimony was urging the Planning Commission to opt out, and I think there was a little bit of confusion about who was making what decision, and we tried to clarify to people that the opt-out is actually the voters, the electors themselves, they had the power to cast those votes, it wasn't a Planning Commission decision. There were also some concerns more specific to land use about rural compatibility, orderly growth, safety in water usage, and just a general desire to put psilocybin businesses in cities first. See how that works, and then go from there. So I'm going to summarize the Planning Commission recommendations, and that's based on a lot of this testimony and extensive conversation. So the first is, as I noted before, to allow manufacturing as farm and processing uses to allow it in forest as well as EFU. The statute allows this, stating that a county may allow the manufacture of psilocybin products as a farm use on land, a zone from farm or forest use, in the same manner as the manufacture of psilocybin products is allowed in EFU zones. So this was a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and that is reflected in the amendments that are before you. Next, changing those hours, those operating hours was originally 7:00 to 7:00, and now the recommendation is 6:00 AM to 11:59 PM, with allowances for those extenuating circumstances that I noted before. Planning Commission also recommended to amend the code to allow service centers in destination resorts. They noted, the testimony noted, as I just stated, that it could maybe be an easier fit with respect to the law and given the natural setting with fewer conflicts. And just like I noticed, noted already, overnight accommodations, ancillary uses, that's kind of already in place, so it does simplify things. It's unclear if adopted whether a destination resort could immediately apply for a site plan review. It's very possible that they may need to modify the conceptual or the final master plan, so you can't just necessarily just pop it in there. There's definitely a mechanism and a process and criteria to go through that. This would likely have to be on a case-by-case basis. The burden would be on the applicant, and it would probably go directly to a hearings officer. So it doesn't give a blank check to say, "Hey, throw all your service centers in these destination resorts." There is a process involved with that.
Question about the kind of scenario of a destination resort, because a destination resort is made up of single-family home properties and an overnight lodging keys. What are we talking about here? Because it says destination resort.
Well, it would be allowed.
Could it be in a house?
The way we have it now, it's allowed in the commercial, I forget exactly the terms. It's in the, it's listed as a use in the...
Because there's hotels, there's condominiums.
...in a single-family home. That's just the...
There's lockout rooms and homes. I mean, there's all, there's so much variable, you know.
The service center itself would just be listed under, sorry.
Yeah, what was it, vision generally?
...services and specialty shops designed to provide... So we wouldn't, you know, the service center would be along with convenience stores, real estate offices, art studios, barber shops, beauty salons, and kind of that area of the destination resort. You cannot have it in a single-family home, so it wouldn't, you know, where the clients might stay overnight is kind of separate from the service center licensed premises aspect. So that's kind of a...
Would it be like the spa?
Some could say that, some could say that, you know, and this will, you know, the burden will be on the applicant to say, "This is exactly what we want." But yeah, I mean, I think the general idea from the testimony is you show up, you go to your thing in the building, and then you go somewhere else within that destination resort potentially to stay overnight.
I'm just relating it to, you know, other therapies, or psychologists, or whatever. They might have a room in their home, which is their practice place, that's where the couch is, right?
We anticipate this would...
Somebody's going to make that case.
Because you're not allowed to have service centers in a single-family.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking it through a little bit with you.
Permutations for sure. I think, you know, staff would look to the applicant to say, "This is exactly what I want, this is how we see the business run," and that determination would have to be made by here and so forth.
So there'd be the response to the application and the justification.
Yeah, but this would just be adding it into that master kind of list of approvals. Recognizing, the Planning Commission recommended to recognize that service centers can be allowed as home occupations or commercial activities in conjunction with farm use. So this isn't necessarily a change to the code, but as I acknowledge, based on that DLCD recommendation, they see two possible doors to allow service centers on EFU land. The Planning Commission chose to not shut those doors. That's basically all this is. They chose to sort of let that sit, there's no specific regulations that we would write to enable that, but they supported kind of upholding that. And this is, again, this is another one that's not quite code language, but just something that came up. The proposed amendments are not subject to a GOAL V analysis, and this was based on testimony received from Land Watch, stating that they believed that these amendments would be subject to a GOAL V analysis, and for the following reasons, staff believes that it's not. Manufacturing is considered a farm use, as we've discussed, so that's kind of already built into the farm use and farming practice and state law. Service centers, those commercial and retail areas that we're originally citing them in, those don't overlap with wildlife area combining zones. Those areas generally are specifically exempt from those wildlife area combining zones. And lastly, coming back to those two doors that could be allowing service centers, those wouldn't be separate standalone conflicting uses that you would have to do an analysis for. They get kind of rolled up into either a home occupation or a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, so as such, they're not subject to a GOAL V analysis. And this was relayed to the Planning Commission, and they were good with that. I'm getting to the end, I... Lastly, this is a tricky one. The Planning Commission recommended allowing overnight accommodations and ancillary uses, yoga, meditation, that type of thing, as accessory uses. So much testimony focused on this, so they really wanted to acknowledge that and honor that, while recognizing that it's really, really hard. There's a lot of limitations within state land use law, as well combined with the timeline that we need to get some sort of laws or regulations on the books. So, they're saying they recommend the idea, they don't know if it's possible to do it, but that's kind of where that, they just wanted to state their position. I think staff has communicated with the board and the Planning Commission, as well as the public and the industry, the difficulties of kind of opening it up a little bit further in this time period, without knowing all of the operational characteristics of a service center, for instance. It can be this big, there'll be this many cars going there, it'll be, you know, that kind of thing. It's very, staff would have to conduct an extensive analysis to say if it complies with all of GOALS 3, 4, 5, and 12, including transportation, and there's not enough time to do that. If in a perfect world, we had that definition, we knew what a service center looked like, and we had more time, that could be an... and we had more time, that could be an avenue to explore. But at this time, staff feels that is, that it's, it's necessary to be limited.
So is this a recommendation by the planning commission or was it just a discussion? Knowing that it's complicated.
Yes and yes. It's kind of both. They, they support the idea, you know, they don't want to, they, they support the idea and recognize the importance.
Well, and this is where we started when we were having the public hearing about the opt-out. I said, hey, you, not a problem, but the land use associated with this will make your head spin. And, you know, nobody was listening, but now I think people are understanding.
It's still spinning.
Yeah.
It's very complicated and it's very difficult. And I think Peter and Will have done a really good job of explaining it in a more technical fashion. But it is, they just wanted to acknowledge that this, this is something, if it were to be possible, if it's possible in the future perhaps, this is something that they would advocate for. Recognizing that we are in this kind of weird situation right now where time and, and capacity is limited to be able to do that. But they wanted to go on record stating that.
When, when I asked a little bit about this the other day, I, I heard about a couple scenarios. I mean, one scenario is actually to let the industry bring forward an application themselves. They do the homework, they come with a proposal, they define it all out. They, they think about what it means to goals three, four, five, and 12 and, and hand it to us on a silver platter. Another, another scenario would be staff doing, us finding, you know, us carving out the, the staff capacity to, to do that work, you know, on, on behalf of the, the people in our community who are asking for access to these services.
Both of those would result in a legislative text amendment that would say, you know, that would identify if possible, these ways to have it in, as overnights as, as kind of these wider, wider parameters.
But there's no other way. Like, is there?
I don't think so.
I mean, is there?
I don't think so. I mean. The legisla-
A legislature, okay.
Farm use EFU zone is very difficult to do anything. And because of we, because of the statewide planning goals, it's hard to analyze things that you, you can't get your arms around. You don't know what the shape is yet. And I think that's, that's the challenge that we're running into now and to, you know, as I noted, I think probably in the opt-out proceedings, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have time to have community conversations and, and group discussions about, you know, how might this look? And then we could say, okay, so that's going to generate this much traffic. So now we can do a traffic analysis or that's going to generate this much conflict with, you know, it would be this big, so it would overlap with wildlife areas in this way. But we just don't know that now. So yeah, I think at this time, we're very, very limited.
And is this something that, you know, so, you know, somebody could bring us an application? Is it possible for someone at the state level to do this? Or is it really, would it really probably be necessary for someone to do a very customized look? Because we have such unique, you know, like such a unique wildlife area combining zone and this, you know, like because of the particularities of Deschutes County? Or is this something that, you know, like a statewide organization could do for a few counties in a generic kind of way?
I think both frankly, but Peter seems to be.
No, no, I, I just want to supplement Tanya's excellent presentation for the record. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Commissioner Chang, Tanya is right. I think it's, I think the amendments that are being put forward by staff with the refinements of the planning commission outside of the overnight accommodations, those match what counties who are, who have decided or are, the opt-out failed, like Jackson County, these are the same amendments that counties are putting forward to match the existing zoning scheme as dictated by the statewide land use program to allow these psilocybin service centers to be in these rural retail, rural commercial areas. Each county is different. They have different unincorporated communities. Some have lands within the urban growth boundary that are not yet annexed where the zoning is, 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 is different than ours. But, but in general, that's where service centers are being targeted.
Then our, our planning commission, our local planning commission has tweaked those and added.
They've, they've added recommendations in terms of hours, in terms of allowing production to be on forest zones. But in terms of service centers.
About the destination resort thing, I mean.
The destination resort is, yeah, that would be one example. We have more destination resorts than, than any other county. So that is one, yeah, that's a good correction on, that's, that's, but I'm, when I, when I think of rural zoning, and so that's why I guess I should, should clarify for rural zoning, destination resorts are an overlay zone to rural zone that will allow more intense uses, overnight accommodations, et cetera. In rural areas, I think our, the, the amendments that the board originally directed us on back in the summer that have been refined by the planning commission match what's happening in Wasco, Ma- Noema, Jackson, Hood River counties. And answer to your question about, is it going to take a change to, to the legislature? In my humble opinion, it's going to change, the legislature is going to need to determine how service centers interact with the rural land use environment. And then to the extent that that is achieved and it's permissible by counties that have opt, that, that allows this industry to occur in the rural county, then they're also going to, those, those opportunities are going to have to match up with Deschutes County's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, which in some areas are more restrictive than state law. And the example is our goal five inventories. This is a new conflicting use. So even if the legislature allowed it permissibly in certain circumstances, based on certain size and operation, operational characteristics, one would still likely need to come forward and, and demonstrate that, I think we probably have to amend our code. And then to the extent that someone wanted to come through, they, they would have to demonstrate that it's not a conflicting use. And then just to top it off, even once those uses are all established, unless the legislature clarifies this, as you have experienced with, most recently with the, the airstrip, you know, non-farm-related use on agricultural lands have to do a farm impact study. So they have to demonstrate that this use is compatible with adjoining farms, not defined. So as Commissioner DeBonne acknowledged, and it's true, it's like what you said about during the opt-out conversations, like the, the land use system will make your head spin, it will make your head spin. And Tanya and Will and I, since the board directed us to prepare typeface and manner amendments, have been really consistent in our messages about how this opportunity, to the extent that it's allowed in Deschutes County, and it is based on, on the vote from last Tuesday, it's still somewhat limited based on the state land use system that we have in place today and how we've implemented at a local scale. So that's a lot, I'm sorry. But it's a lot to unpack and unwind for this industry.
Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, just trying to be supplemental.
That was good, Peter. I got the hair spin down, I forgot that.
It is spinny. All right, continuing on. Just a brief summary, just to kind of circle back on where, where the proposal allows certain things. Manufacturing as a farm use and as a processing use, we're proposing EFU, F1 and F2 zones. Service centers, as noted, rural, commercial, rural service centers, Sun River Commercial, Sun River Town Center, Terabon Commercial, Tumlo Commercial, those are all the same, plus the destination resorts. Testing labs, rural industrial and Tumlo industrial. So the process and the next steps. As noted, we have a public hearing scheduled for Monday, November 21st. The plan is to have it from three to five or however long is needed, followed by a break, and then reconvening at 6:00 PM. And this is in anticipation of a lot of testimony. We received a lot from the planning commission. We had the luxury then of being able to spread it out over a couple of days. I don't think the board has that luxury given the time, time constraints right now. So we are sending out a media blast. Thanks, Whitney. That's going out probably this, this week. Well, yes, it's going out this week because the hearing's on Monday. So we're, we're covering all, all angles in terms of getting that word out. So this is something a little bit different in this, about the schedule going forward. The board hearing is scheduled for the 21st. Staff recommends keeping the written record left open until the 28th. So one week, staff will have two days, a little bit less, to prepare a deliberation packet. We anticipate board deliberation on December 7th. And this is where it differs from the memo and I, I apologize. I, I was on autopilot, but it's our understanding that this will require emergency adoption. There's not enough time otherwise to have a non-emergency adoption. So initially in the memo, I said, first reading December 2nd, second reading December 21st. That's actually not the case. It would have to either be deliberations and first and second reading on December 7th. If for some reason the board chose to keep deliberating, that there is that wiggle room for December 21st, but that would still have to be an emergency adoption and first and second reading that day.
So the 14th doesn't play into anything? December 14th?
I was told, you know, it's possible now that I'm looking at it, the board is meeting on the 14th? Okay, you know, that was initially because.
Because December 7th, Commissioner DeBonne is like, I don't think you're going to be here.
Okay.
And so, just wondering if.
Okay. That's, you know, that's, that's my error because we, we were going from the 7th to the 21st because we assumed the two weeks between the first and second reading. So apologies for that. So I guess the 14th is available for something. But regardless, adoption does need to be by emergency.
It does need to be by emergency.
Because there's not enough time. If it's non-emergency, it's a 90-day effective date and that would create a weird 90-day.
Yes, we'd have three months.
What is OHA, is the date set? What does that look like?
OHA, I believe their public comment on, on their proposed, the latest batch of rules begins tomorrow, I think the input is. I just got an email about it. Their goal is to have it wrapped up by the end of the year. I'm not totally certain, right? Yeah, on, on kind of what actually happens in that interim. But they have public comment open for quite a while. But I would not honestly anticipate many rules coming before December 29th or something like that.
They're planning on the first, being able to make a license application on the first, first business day or whatever still.
So as, as we've noted before, people who are applying for licenses for a service center or manufacturing will have to get a lux from the county so that they have to come to us.
That's why this matters.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, it's a little bit tight. But we can, thank you for pointing out that we do also have the 14th. So there's a little bit of flexibility. I believe that is it. Yes, that is all.
I did just notice I have an agenda conference on Thanksgiving Day. So on my schedule. Brenda? Anyway, maybe Nick will want to meet that day.
We're setting up for a public hearing on the matter. And this will be kind of the, the code package again.
I will be doing probably the exact same presentation, perhaps even a little bit longer. I will be giving a lot of background because I think there has been some confusion about kind of what happens when. And I think now that we're past the election, it's a little bit clearer. But I want to make it very clear to the people participating what they're, what they're there for and what they're there to talk about.
So you're saying then we could actually do the board deliberation and first reading on December 14th, but it would have to be first and second reading?
Whenever that is done, whether it's the 7th, 14th, or 21st, it has to be adoption by emergency. So that means.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
I guess I would just say that so much of the public engagement to date has been about the opt-outs. I, I know that, I know both, both for and against, you know, people, people were very focused on that. And I think it has inhibited people from thinking about the subtle land use issues that we need to, we need to parse out in order to be able to provide our community with the access to these services that they have asked for through the electoral process. So I'm hopeful that when people show up to testify, that we're on to that discussion. That they're on to that discussion and that the board is also on to that discussion.
Yes, I would say that for anyone who's watching, who's getting their testimony ready, the more specific, the better. You know, I think it's very helpful rather than, you know, all testimony is extremely helpful. But if it's specific and say, this is, this is what we would like it to look like. And it's helpful for the board. I think it's helpful for staff. That makes the process run a little bit better.
I guess I'd also just express appreciation to, to the clerk's office and to Dave for getting us a breakdown of, a breakdown of, of the votes for and against the opt-out up to now. You know, what we all, what we do know at this point, because it was very informative to see that people in the unincorporated county and in the incorporated county, they want access to these services.
Well, I absolutely support the position I started with, was this is a land use issue. Having that opt-out discussion is, is part of it is a marketing effort. So people are even paying attention because there's a small set of very focused and strong advocates. But then there's the other 99% of the people that live here. And it's very good that we were taking time to, to look at the big picture and understand what this thing is. It could be, who knows exactly what it's going to bring. But yeah, we'll, we'll see where the, where we get this thing landed. So I'm happy. I, it's fine if, you know, the people voted either way on this. We prepared and the planning commission did a great job thinking it through and hearing all the testimony.
Yes, thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have, are we good to go to item 14? The paid leave?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Kathleen Hinman, HR Director for the Record. And I brought with me Sue Henderson, our HR Specialist who focuses on our Leave and Disability Program. So if you have technical and hard questions, Sue's here to answer them.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah. So we are here to talk about the recommendation to the board for approval of participation in the state plan for paid leave Oregon and then authorization of county administrator signature on applicable plan documents. These actually haven't been fully published yet. So when they do, we would ask that we have that direction. So background, House Bill 2005 was signed in August 2019, making Oregon the eighth state to establish paid leave program. That was delayed due to COVID and implementation was in 2023. I apologize, my place just got lost here. There's a couple of decisions that are for consideration in front of the board in, along with this. And in particular, it's not if we do or do not enroll. That is a requirement of all employees and employers. But there are some pieces of the, of the program that we have some considerations to, to think about. In particular, one is whether or not we enroll in a state plan or an equivalent plan. The law does allow that we could sort of self-insure, create our own plan. Given the risk associated with that, we don't have any details, and not just we, right? Any employers don't really have any of the details yet in terms of what the claims experience is going to be or what that's going to look like. So self-insuring at this point is not recommended. It's just too much of a risk. So really looking at a state plan or a privatized plan is where we're at.
Just a moment, yeah, I'm just kind of getting my mindset around this. So we're, so we're a large employer talking about participating in or, or doing something with this new requirement at the state. You know, I'm just, got to switch my mindset here because we've been talking about land use policies and decisions that we're making. Now, now we're kind of on the receiving end of a state law change representing the employees of the county on this topic, so.
Right, so the paid leave program will provide paid leave to employees. And it is set up to be about 12 weeks of paid leave. There are some situations where additional two weeks can be earned. There are some specifications around the leave, like when applicable, it, it will run concurrently with other existing leave programs like FMLA and OFLA. So these, you know, the, the rulemaking around this has, has, has been developed and is currently still being developed. So more additional information will come as we have it. But we do have sort of the, the understanding of what the program will look like, the impact on us generally. And through that, let's see, the, one of the, that main decision on whether or not we participate in a state-run plan, which is staff's recommendation, is. we participate in a state-run plan, which is staff's recommendation, is coming, that deadline is coming fast because we do have to make the decision to, if we are going to go with an equivalent plan, we would have to give notice of intent to the state by the end of November. And if we were to go that route, provide notice of the state and change our mind, for instance, then enroll in the state plan at a later date, we would be, sort of a penalty would be applied to our rates for that piece. So what staff is seeking, board direction on how to structure the implementation of the Paid Leave Oregon benefits. And as I went over, we have the state-run plan and then we have the privatized insurance. So a couple of pieces that went into our, the decision for our recommendation is, you know, what does Paid Leave Oregon provide? We talked about it, providing the paid leave for employees at 12 weeks plus an additional two weeks of paid leave in some of the pregnancy-related situations. Benefit amounts are calculated on an employee's average wage and takes into account the state's average weekly wage. It is a formula, so we can kind of anticipate what that will be. What we don't know is the utilization of it because it will be, it's not existed before. It's going to be new and it covers some relationships and circumstances that are different than current protected leave. So we don't know the impact of what that will look like because no one's ever asked for that leave type before, right? So when will it start? Well, employee benefits start September 3rd of 2023. So that means when would people be able to request this paid leave? That's when. For the state plan, employee and employer contributions actually start on January 1, 2023, to build the state pool. And for equivalent plans and contracting with a private insurance company, that, those contributions would actually, for the plans we looked at, would begin September 2023. So align with those benefit, the employee benefit start date. That would be for both employee and employer contributions. So how, how is this paid for or what are their financial and resource considerations? As established in Section 16 of the House Bill 2005, the 2023 rate is set at 1% of staff wages, up to 132, 900 annually per person. And that's split between the employers, employer pays 40% of that 1%, and employees pay 60% of that 1%. So in examples that if an employee made $1,000 in wages on their paycheck, the Paid Leave Oregon contribution would be $10 for that paycheck, the employee would pay six and the employer would pay four. If the county enrolls in that state plan, employees in the county would begin making contributions to the state program through payroll deductions beginning January 1. And that's subject to statute and bargaining. For fiscal year 2023, the county did budget for the employer cost of enrolling in the state plans, the cost we knew at the time, and that's what we budgeted for. FY '23 employer costs are estimated at approximately 216,000 and that's due to it being a half-year implementation because it starts halfway through our fiscal year. If we annualize that, we're looking at about 433,000. And the employee contributions or premium payment at that time would be, an estimate annualized would be about 649,000 while we were paying the 433. So that's at 60% employee, 40% employer. So human resources staff reviewed bids for equivalent plan options and the option that the county would be able to participate in for an equivalent plan has a rate of 1.42% of wages. So it is a higher cost at that point. And there is a requirement in the plan that employers may not withhold more than the 60% of the 1% rate from the employees' wages. So that difference in the 1%, the 1.42% rate would be borne by the county, by the employer. So given that rule, the county would pay more than 40% of the cost if we're to select that private plan. And the cost of that private plan, again, same situation, we would look at, the employee contributions would remain at the 649,000 annualized and the employer contributions would go up to 535,000 approximately. So with the implementation, given that the details and major rulemaking by the state was finalized recently with additional rules and processes still being worked on, if the county enrolls in a private plan, that notification, like I mentioned, for approval, to request approval for the equivalent plan would need to be to the state of Oregon by November 30th, 2022. That penalty fee would be assessed if we did decide to enroll in an equivalent plan and then revert back to the state plan. While year one costs would be lower of selecting a private plan, staff does still recommend enrolling in the state plan as ongoing costs are expected to be lower. Employers are allowed to move from the state plan to an equivalent plan and vice versa annually each fall. So given this flexibility, HR feels that the best option is to enroll in the state plan due to the lower cost, to avoid any concern of non, risk of non-compliance as details continue to be worked out here, and then to provide time for the county to evaluate this new benefit and its impact. What's the utilization look like? How much, what impact is it on staff in terms of supporting our employees through the programs, through the project? After one or more years with this benefit, the county will have data on utilization, claims cost, and the impact on staff administration. So this useful information will support analysis and decision-making in the future. HR will continue to monitor the benefit after it goes into effect. So PLO is available to employees beginning September 3rd and time is needed to provide information to employees about the new leave program and set up any internal processes to support it. So as staff receives direction from the board, we will provide notice of our intentions to implement the law and its program requirements to our unions and HR will provide additional updates and supports to departments and employees as new information is available as we move forward. So as I mentioned, budget impacts, we did go ahead and put this into the budget, so it is in, there's a separate line item specific for this in department budgets, so we have budgeted for state plan costs. Are there any questions that I can answer at this point? That's really my memo right now.
Do, can a person use this a day at a time or how does somebody implement something like that?
Yeah, so it is, it can be at a workday, as, as easy as one workday at a time. It can be up to consecutive work weeks, as we mentioned, up to about 12 or 14 in some situations.
How does that interact with vacation and paid time off?
Sure, so the, if they apply for the Paid Leave Oregon, that would be how they would be compensated for any type of wages, not through the payroll system through Deschutes County. We, as an employer, cannot require them to use a TML benefit in lieu of this program. They have the right to do that. There are some other additional considerations in how we structure use of our TML around that and we'll be discussing that later.
We are going into executive on this, are we not?
But these, I mean, this is protected time.
Correct.
Either way.
Correct.
Currently, currently if someone uses their, uses their vacation ti, has used their vacation time, has used their own personal sick time and, yeah, a, a member of their family becomes terminally ill or something, they have access to protected time to, to take care of that person. They just, they just are financially out of luck. I mean, it's that-
Yeah.
And this, this, this patches that so that they actually are not facing the financial burden at the same time that they're facing the other things that they're facing.
Yeah, there, there will be situations when leave for, that leaves will run concurrently, right? So when FMLA or OFLA protections would run concurrently with Paid Leave Oregon and there are situations where it wouldn't run concurrently because the, the qualifying member or the, the qualifying event, well, may not qualify and they would kind of be those separate buckets. But there are going to be times when they do all sort of run concurrently. So those, those calculators of time and then now pay would be consecutive. So it wouldn't necessarily always be sort of multiple buckets that they can choose from, if that makes sense.
Well, I mean, I'm supportive of partnering with the state on this, that we're not going to go out to the private industry, especially without experience on the claims, just like you mentioned. So I'll move approval for participating in the state plan for Paid Leave Oregon and the authorization of the county administrator's signature on the applicable plan documents.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of the Chest?
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Other items? I did want to bring up, I believe Judy Trago is, her appointment is to term out at the end of December and how can she be reappointed to the Budget Committee since she does have this year's knowledge under her belt?
Thank you, Chair. This was on my, this is on my list for our one-on-one meetings next week to seek direction from you because you're exactly right. If, if it's the will of the board, I'm happy to reach out to her to determine her interest. And if so, then it's, it would be a board decision if to either reappoint, or to appoint her to a new three-year term or to implement a recruitment process. So certainly it's the board's decision.
Okay. All right, good. So next week, you're going to-
I support asking her if she's interested as a starting point.
So if, if, if the commissioners are interested, that's kind of step one, is I'll be happy to reach out to Judy and we'll go from there.
Okay. Is that okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yeah. We should ask her if she's still interested.
Yeah, I'll do so.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Are there any other items? Agenda-
I've just got one little note here. A proposal, I propose that we maybe look for a time as a Board of Commissioners to have just a little, you know, pre-goals and objectives session even by the end of this year. And I'm looking for just kind of a, a refresher and I, I mean, I'm, let's go out to lunch or something, a refresh between the three of us working together and, you know, setting up for the, a bright future.
Okay.
So it's a request maybe to have a work session time, maybe non-standard time for us to get together. So I would ask that Nick just, yeah, work with us, find a time.
And are we going to do our agenda conference Thursday in Eugene? Or what, how are we going to handle that?
A good question because I'll actually be at LCDC on, on Thursday.
Right.
So Eric Crop is going to be acting county administrator in my absence this week. I know Dave will be here, so-
Dave and I will both be here. We're happy to do a Zoom meeting with, with Chair Adair or a phone call. And if the time doesn't work, we can reschedule it.
No, that's, sounds appropriate. Thursday sounds good.
And we know a couple of items. We have the psilocybin hearings-
Right.
In the afternoon, we have the land use decision that's coming back. So we'll see what other topics come in between kind of the 1:00, 1:03 PM.
Sounds like we're going to have another outstanding Monday.
Yes, together.
Yes, together.
With a meal in between.
It's not a song, Monday, Monday or something? Okay, so, all right. What? It was. I know that.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Other items, I would just report back that, well, myself and Commissioner Adair attended a, a housing policy workshop hosted by the Ben Chamber. Nick, you were there as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
Last week and a number of interesting policy and legislative ideas floating around in that group that, and they refined their lists a little further during that. And then also on the housing front, there was a housing bond roundtable discussion this morning that Housing For All put together, they brought in. You know, people who could speak with experience about housing, housing bonds and housing levies that were implemented in Seattle, in, in Seattle, in Oakland, California, and Portland and the metro area. And then, you know, even, you know, during the, during that session, they, they mentioned even some more cities that were smaller, which maybe are even more relevant to our experience, Bellingham, which is smaller than the city of Bend, and Vancouver, Washington. So very interesting concepts for basically how you find, how you find local funding that can help to open up all sorts of federal and state leverage to get the housing that is needed for our community built that is otherwise very, very difficult to build. I'll be curious to see where those concepts go in the next few months.
And I did find out that we could do four stories for, on top of our parking garage. So what I was, I was sitting by an architect, I think Seth Anderson, and he had told me that we could actually do four stories. Apparently condo insurance for a building is incredibly expensive and so, anyway, they were, that was one of the items that they were discussing. How do you get, how do you get condo insurance less for projects? But, yeah, four stories, so. And I did attend the Sun River Chamber that morning and they were reporting that Thanksgiving numbers were actually down compared to prior years. Run, you know, pre-rental numbers were down, though Christmas seemed to be running the same as prior, you know, as the past. So anyway, they did say Thanksgiving was a little bit down. And then I had the COAC meeting in the after that and we had an excellent presentation from the airport, the Roberts Field and what they want to do there with the two-story building with, you're actually going to go out into the plane from the second floor. And, and then the Bend Airport, Tracy Williams, who is the administrator for that program. And she has never been to Brusada, so I'm going to pick her up and take her to lunch. So she actually goes somewhere. She's, it sounds like she has a very narrow path that she drives and, but anyhow, she was at our meeting. It was great to see her in person. I think she was actually in the Air Force at one point in time. But they're very excited about their tower. But it sounds like it's going to be a while and the timeline for that tower construction is so tight. I'm just, it's really, it's going to be incredibly fragile in order to make, pull that off. Whitney, do you have something for other items?
Thanks, Commissioner Adair. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator, and I'm joined virtually by Jeff Hines, Fair and Expo Director. We had wanted to check in with the board. Last week, I forwarded a draft letter that the Fair Board had been working on related to the DSL land transaction and there was a revised version of that draft that we wanted to make sure that the board saw. I'm going to pass out a hard copy, but there's a, the tail end of this draft sort of alludes to a commitment by both the county and the Fair Board. And so we wanted to make sure the commissioners were supportive of this language as it's drafted. So I'll go ahead and pass this out. And Jeff, if there's anything else that you'd like to share with the board related to this, please feel free to do that while I'm handing this out.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Hines, Director of Fair and Expo, for the record. As Whitney kind of alluded to, wanted to make sure that you all had a copy of the letter that the Fair Board has been working on, expressing its support of the transfer of the land that's been discussed as part of the DSL land exchange in hopes that that continues to move that forward. Certainly, Fair and Expo Board is interested and excited about the possibility of that transaction moving forward and wants to be as proactive as possible, but also wants to make sure that it's working cooperatively with, with you, with staff and with administration and making sure that that is done so in an appropriate manner and bringing this letter to you today for review and in consideration of your perspective on whether or not this looks appropriate to share and/or what might be the next appropriate steps from your perspective. And Fair Board is looking to meet again as early as this week, if we can find a time that'll have quorum for finalization of this letter. And if not this week, I anticipate probably next week to get it out and on Vicky Walker's desk. probably next week to get it out, and on Vicky Walker's desk, and as quickly as possible.
Jeff, we really need to get this letter out as soon as possible. I did talk to, you know, Governor Brown last Monday about it, and I fear I'll see her on Thursday. I'm sure she'll be at our venue for AOC. So, yeah, it would be really nice if she could see this letter this week. And then, I was also, David Bishop called me, and I'm going to give Bev Carneau a call and ask Bev to give her, the governor, a call too, so that, this, this needs to happen before 2023 hits?
Yeah, and the Fair Board is, is moving forward as quickly as it can. We're, we're working to find a quorum so that it can be approved by the, the board with some changes that were made after last week's, last Tuesday's meeting, and as quickly as we can get that done, and an approved letter, we'll do that, and also get the signatures of the, the full Fair Board on this letter, so that it has the, the signatures of all seven members, I anticipate.
You think you can get that done by tomorrow?
So you can carry it?
No, I'm, I have to go to Salem on Wednesday because of this COAC meeting, that I've tried to get them to reschedule, and they don't seem to want to do that, but I will be in Salem for a few hours. I could drop off a hard copy if possible.
This is a, this is a letter from the Fair Board?
Oh, I know, I know, but just to drop it off and say, please, we really, we need to get this, I mean, the governor approved it. I'd love to get it done.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we'll be able to get the, the entire, the Fair Board together that quickly. I know we're working to try to get a meeting this week as early as possible, and waiting for, for everybody's schedules to, to align, but as soon as I can get that done, and have it rereviewed and approved, we'll, we'll get it out, and I can share with you as quickly as possible. I don't know that tomorrow, I'll be able to get that done by tomorrow. I get, I'll, I'll work to see if that's possible.
Okay.
And I'm supportive of the comments saying it within conjunction with the Deschutes County Commissioners, because, yeah, I'm very much, I'm, I'm on board.
Yeah, and I, the, the willingness to use resources at our disposal in whatever capacity is needed to, to get it done, I, I really appreciate that offer, gesture, commitment from the, the Fair Board.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'll let the Fair Board go.
Thanks, thanks, Jeff. Any other points? No, anything else? All right, so we need to go into executive.